Good evening, everyone. We will call the special city council meeting to order for May 14, 2012. First order of business is roll call. Charlene?
Nordstrom.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Sasso.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
We have quorum.
We have a quorum. Next order of business is the invocation. If everyone please rise and Jerry Wright will lead us in prayer.
A sign, something that leads to something else, maybe an arbitrary or conventional sign that has a connection with what is significant only by agreement of one people, such as the flag. Or maybe a pure sign that leads to the knowledge of something without itself being first known, as our ideas lead to the knowledge of real objects. Is it from mental science, good meaning, or understanding, as words lead to the knowledge of things of mental status? Manifestive signs show the existence of something else, as a person's external behavior indicates his or her personality and training. From Scripture, John, Chapter 4, Verses 8, as Christ said to a certain royal official, "Unless you people see miraculous signs and wonders, you will never believe." May our work tonight, our sign ordinance, shed new light and vision on how we can best present our community to all who live in this city. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jerry. Next order of business is item number one. This is a set for hearing. Jordan, can you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Sam. First item is the tax increment district, and this is item number one. This resolution creating tax increment district number 73, and this is more generally described as being located south of St. Joseph Street, west of Fifth Street, east of Sixth Street, and north of Quincy Street. And I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Brown, is set for hearing on May 21, 2012. Any discussion on setting for hearing? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no from Steve Laurenti. Jordan, item two.
Item two is, this is a request by Dream Design International, and this is to consider an application for tax increment district number 73 project plan, and this is generally described as being located south of St. Joseph Street, west of Fifth Street, east of Sixth Street, and north of Quincy Street, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Nordstrom, to set for hearing for May 21. Any discussion? Steve?
I understand that we're going to have a hearing on these, and the fact of the matter is, I know that this...
Steve, I don't think your light is working.
It is on.
Okay. Go ahead.
Do you want me to speak louder?
Go ahead.
But the problem I have with this TIF and all of the TIFs that we've had before, and I think everybody's heard me speak before, but, and I know that we're making this tax increment financing district smaller, but the fact of the matter is, this TIF as presented, even though it's smaller, which is a good thing, but if it were presented to us on this development from the beginning, I would have voted no on it. Because I believe that TIFs, one, pick winners and losers in the private market. There are many people who have done developments in this town at or near or larger than this development. Mr. Alex Johnson, I'm sure in 1928, when he built the hotel, which towered over the city at the time, you know, obviously didn't get a TIF for his development, and it made tremendous impact on this city and its further development and its growth. And that's just one testament. Another one would be Mr. McCarthy, who spoke before us when we initially voted on this TIF, around the time that I first started on the council, when he took the old Elks Building and redid that entire building, sank hundreds of thousands of dollars of his own money into that building without a TIF. And that made a tremendous impact on the economic development of Rapid City. But the fact of the matter is, Mr. McCarthy began paying his newly assessed taxes right away. He paid his full tax burden, and he knew he was going to have to do that, but he did it anyway, because he saw an opportunity, and he knew there was risk, just like there is with this one, but he was willing to pay his full tax burden. Could he have gotten a TIF for his development? I don't know. But he did a lot of infrastructure things to that building, no doubt about it. And, but the fact of the matter is, he paid for those himself, with his own financing. And this is the problem that I have with it, because we are picking winners and losers. And the fact of the matter is, this TIF, I mean, we can dress it up any way we want, we can make it smaller, you know, and I guess the only thing I can think of right off the top of my head right now is, you can put lipstick on a TIF, but the fact of the matter is, this is still a TIF, ladies and gentlemen. It's a TIF that chooses winners and losers in private development, and we have to change this. The fact of the matter is, we have no reporting today that tells us if tax increment financing helps the bottom line of this city. We don't have a report. We put millions of dollars on the line, and we have no report that says whether this TIF actually benefits Rapid City. Because here's the dichotomy. We voted for this TIF once before, I just want to make one last comment. We voted for this TIF not knowing this, in fact, and the fact of the matter is, we continue to approve these TIFs without knowing whether they have any benefit, because there's a lot of cost in it for the current taxpayers paying their full burden, because we have to support all of the increased demand for basic services to this until the TIF dissolves. And that's a fact. And we don't know in the end if there's a positive, and yet, we're going to approve this at this next hearing, no doubt about it, without knowing. And I think that's somewhat disturbing. Thank you.
Any further comment on the motion to set for hearing? Jerry Wright? And then we'll go to Charity.
I did a little checking on this question as to whether there was any benefit, and talked to our finance officer, and if I remember the right, the last seven plus or minus years, the mill levy has increased 3%, and most of it was in the last year, but the revenue from property taxes increased 36%. Something tells me something's going up in value, so I think there are some benefits, no doubt about it. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Charity?
I'm looking forward to the debate when it's actually time to have the debate, but I think something to keep in mind is that there's not one dime that's going into the building, that this is all the infrastructure that is our responsibility, so just let that brew until it's time to actually have the debate.
Any further discussion on the motion to set for hearing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no from Steve Laurenti. Item number three, Jordan, can you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Sam. Item number three is first reading ordinance number 5779, and this is an ordinance repealing Chapter 15.28 of the Rapid City Code in its entirety and adopting a new Chapter 15.28 regulating signage within the city of Rapid City. And I will yield the floor.
Okay, what we're going to do tonight, if you turn to the third page, we have put together lists as best we can based on the comments from the city attorney's office, from council members, and also from the general public. Now, although we cannot add additional items to the agenda, we can certainly add items of discussion under each ordinance. So what we can do is, we'll go through these items, and then if anyone else has items to add that are amendments to the ordinance or suggestions that need to be researched by staff that you'd like to discuss, then we can do that at that time. So if you have a question of a member of the audience, you can ask them your question, and we do not have a specific time available for public comment tonight, but if any member of the council has a question of anybody in the audience, you can step up and answer the question. And then this will also be coming back to the council for a second reading unless the council decides to simply amend it and not approve first reading. So there's a couple of ways that this could happen tonight. And we're going to go down the list here, and we'll start with item number one, and if somebody wants to make a motion to amend, you can offer the motion, and we can have that discussion, and then we'll go on to the next item. I do not have the advantage of having the lights tonight, so please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and if I get out of order and skip over you, please don't be offended. So we'll start with Charity.
The question that I had was, I was under the impression when we set this up, that this would be a way for us to sit down and hash some things out, but that first reading would actually be at the next council meeting?
We can do that.
Is that...
You have the ability, sorry to interrupt, you have the ability tonight to offer all these as amendments and then approve first reading, or you can offer them as amendments and then continue first reading as amended.
So we can just take a pulse and see where we're at as the conversation goes?
Yep. So first order of business is adding a severability clause. Joel, we introduce this item, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. A severability clause would simply state that if any part of the code were found to be invalid, it wouldn't affect the application of the rest of the code. It's fairly standard. I don't see anything controversial about it, so we would ask for direction to put that in the next draft of the code. Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion or a discussion? Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would like to ask if this is in any way related to the current litigation and planning ahead, that we may have something in here that may or may not be of concern. I'm just wondering for the reasons why the severability clause, and I guess that could go to Mayor Quaker or Mr. Landine, either.
Joel. Thank you, Mayor. I wouldn't say it was related to the current litigation. The fact is, the litigation that we are currently involved in was based on the initiated ordinances. Those are already in effect. This code does take those provisions, so down the road, if there were a ruling or partial ruling against the city, it would preserve other parts of the code. So to that degree, it is useful based on the litigation, but it is something that we put in many of our ordinances, and especially ones that are subject to some controversy like the sign code is.
Jordan, you still have the floor.
Thank you, I'll yield for the time.
Ron?
Move to add a severability clause.
Second. We have a motion by Sasso and a second by Wright to amend the ordinance to add a severability clause. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, Joel?
The next issue is the 10-year amortization period for legal non-conforming signs found in Section 1528.230. This was recommended by the ad hoc sign code task force. I provided a legal opinion previously, both at the meeting and in writing. I do have some concerns about the legality of this in the long term, especially based on South Dakota state law. There's a code provision that talks about amortization and says that it's not allowed, and to the extent that signs are taken, that just compensation needs to be paid. Ultimately, this wouldn't become an issue for 10 years, but I think that down the road, it would really potentially become a problem.
Move to remove. Second. We have a motion by Davis and a second by Doyle to remove the amortization clause from Section 15.28.230 of Ordinance 5779. This would be a motion to amend. Any further discussion on this motion to amend? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three? Joel?
In the latest draft, I removed the exception for public purpose signs. One of the recommendations come out of the ad hoc sign code task force was that all signs should be treated the same, whether it be on-premise or public purpose, and there was some concern with the public purpose exception. From my own dealings with it, I think the public purpose exception has caused some problems over the years. By removing the public purpose exception, the signs for government entities or government buildings would be required to comply with the on-premise sign code, or there is some provision for miscellaneous signs, and essentially those are used for government, like churches or schools, that are located in residential zoning districts. So all of the buildings would need to comply with those sign regulations, and there wouldn't be a special exception essentially for them.
So move. Second. Okay, we have a motion to remove. Is that your intent of your motion, Jerry Wright? To remove...
So all signs are treated the same?
Okay, the motion is to remove the exception for public purpose signs, and that was seconded by Mason. We have some comments. We'll first go to Bonnie Peterson.
Joel, I have questions for you on this subject. If we remove the public purpose signs, would the signs, like the electronic signs, like the ones I'm thinking of right in the gap, or any other public service sign that a company owns, do they then, are they no longer required to advertise for public purposes?
No, they would still be required to follow the stipulations of approval, they would just become legal non-conforming signs. They just wouldn't, it really affects the signs into the future. I think any stipulations of approval for those signs would still be in effect in order for those signs to remain in place.
Okay. The other question I have for you is that, for instance, the Civic Center sign, I think they generate a lot of money for the taxpayer, which is different than, say, the public purpose, you know, signs that's owned by a private company. That money is generated for the company itself, and so I have some concerns about that, because if the, say if there was an emergency or something, we could co-opt the Civic Center sign for emergency messages or whatever that we would have control over, whereas we would have to ask the companies, you know, to put out their emergencies, so it wouldn't be... So I don't know, I have a little bit of concern about that, in that the resources from a sign that's truly for a governmental entity is going into the pockets of the governmental entity as opposed to one that's owned by the sign companies. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. What of Charity Doyle?
I just wanted to make sure that the existing ones are all grandfathered in. Is that part of this motion?
Correct.
Dave Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I was basically doing the same thing as far as the grandfather, but Bonnie, I've got to address one thing, just probably to make people roll over in the middle of the night and wake up and wonder what meeting they attended tonight, because I've probably been the one person the most critical of something you asked a question about earlier, and I'm going to compliment those that are in the railroad right of way, that that particular company has probably been as good as anyone I've ever seen at helping out when there are emergencies or other public announcements that need to be made. So not to let that go by as a question that raised that goes undefended, even by one who is not normally known as one of your defenders.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to remove the exception for public purpose signs while grandfathering in the existing signs. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just keep my comments really brief, but I remember a while ago when Alderman Wythenbach was on here on this council, and we had a similar discussion back then, but I still stand on the idea that was stated that what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and I think this is a good rule to abide by.
Thank you, Jordan. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is regarding Section 15.28.170. This is a suggestion that had come from me and also some council members regarding making a static off-premise digital message change no faster than 60 seconds. And I would like to suggest that we consider doing that. Currently, the rotation, I believe, is 10. Is that correct? Six or 10?
Six.
And I think that this is an amendment that is worth considering, and although it will likely make the individual ads for the end users a little bit more expensive, because it'll be longer ads, they will, you know, we're not asking for any block out times or any of that, so the signs can still be run, you know, the same cycle. And when Terry Waltersdorf and I inquired of, our traffic division is the average time cycle for a signal, it's anywhere from 60 to 80 seconds, and we figure, I believe that this is an appropriate amendment to consider, would encourage the council to consider doing this. Jerry Wright?
Should the same standard apply for on-premise?
That's a difficult question, and I think the answer to that is, it depends on the, I think it depends on the size, and it depends on whether, you know, whether there's off-premise advertising that's going along with that, but I think the, you know, the small bank sign that has a scroll going across it, that wouldn't be the intent here. I'd be looking at the video, you know, the videotype displays. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a simple question, and I hope it's simple. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, the off-premise sign companies are selling a number of products, i.e. the advertising and time on their board. By delineating an amount of time, are we setting a cap on the number of products that they can sell in a given 24-hour period? And I guess I would ask, is that legal to cap a market?
Joel Landine?
Any timeframe on the, established by ordinance or state law, is going to affect the amount of advertisement you can play per day. We already have, based on state law or the state requirements, a six-second. I believe we could legally increase that. There might, at some point, become a reasonable in this argument, whether the regulation was reasonable, but I don't believe you have a problem with the 60-second rotation.
Can, yeah, can I then ask, I mean, is this based on safety? Is this based on some sort of, you know, I mean, based on what are we pushing this for? Because I guess I feel uncomfortable, the more I think about this, that we're capping the amount of sale of a product that can happen in the city, and my big concern is, is not that it'll, not necessarily with just off-premise signage, but does this open the door for more? So I guess I'd like to hear the explanation of why specifically. I mean, is this based on the morale, welfare, or the general safety? I mean, what, under kind of what paradigm are we pushing this under?
Thank you for the question, Jordan. You know, when you look at this whole issue, one of the concerns that has been raised, and the concern has come from the community and also from, you know, within the council, and also from me, is the rotation of the signs and how quickly they're rotating. When you're sitting at a traffic signal and the sign, you know, and the signs are, you know, are flipping through at 6 to 10, you know, 6 to 8 seconds, you know, they're, it's less distraction if there's a slower rotation. In terms of the cap, there's the same number of minutes available in the day. By no means are we asking, would we be asking for the signs to go dark at any point, we'd simply be asking for a longer rotation. Your points are valid, and I don't have the ability to make motions anymore, so if there's no motion, then we move on, but I think that this is, this is addressing concerns that have been raised that are valid concerns. I appreciate the question. And you still have the floor.
Thank you, and I guess I'll leave with this last thought, but we did receive some information, and after looking at it, and also extensively looking over the Federal Highway Agency's website and verifying that those studies were valid, I guess thus far the information I'm looking at has stated that, you know, at 1.28, you know, I believe it was 1 minute and 28 seconds or 1.28 seconds, is the average look time to those signs. And, you know, I guess it's kind of irregardless, if that's the average time, and that's based on a federal administration study, I guess I'm having real trouble buying off on this because it's still, I'm not buying that this could be based on some sort of general concern that we have, an obligation to move on. And I'll yield.
We'll go to Steve Laurenti, and then we'll go to Jerry.
I have the same sentiments, and I appreciate that from Alderman Mason, but I think we're limiting voice if we do that, and if we increase the cost to advertise on these signs, we know a lot of that cost or some of that cost. Some cost is going to get passed on to the people who want to use that media to advertise, and I have a problem with that when we start, when government starts infringing on business, and granted, the people voted for no more digital signs, but we're going a little bit further than that with a lot of these things, so I'm really concerned about 60 seconds, especially when we are looking at the suggestion of going from 6 to 10, and we're going to go six times that to 60. And I've read a lot of studies as well that Jordan has talked about, and I haven't seen anything yet that says that they create a distraction and that they point to greater accidents in those particular areas where those signs are changing from one advertisement to another. And so I have some reservations about wanting to support something that further limits the ability for these companies to do business, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Charity?
Thank you. Jerry or Charity?
Charity.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion that we...
Take your name.
(laughing).
It's easy to confuse the...
That we make static off-premise digital message change no faster than eight seconds. If I could get a second, I will explain.
We have a motion and a second for eight seconds for off-premise digital rotation.
Thank you.
And you have the floor.
I'm basing this on the fact that, like Jordan has indicated, and like I'm holding in my hand, the Federal Highway Administration has done extensive research on this, and they are comfortable with eight seconds until the data shows otherwise. Doing my own analysis, just to help people put it into perspective, between 6, 8, 10, and 60 seconds, if the driver is looking at this billboard over a quarter of a mile doing, now let's see, 35 miles an hour, let's say, obviously, they would see one add in 60 seconds, they would see two in 10 seconds, three in eight seconds, and four in six seconds. So I think that we're increasing safety by a little bit, you know, hedging on the side of safety in alignment with what the Federal Highway Administration suggests, without impacting somebody's business, because, I mean, quite honestly, we have impacted a business in the initiated measures that passed last summer. I don't want to add insult to injury, if you will, so again, this is something that the data substantiates. Thank you.
And we'll go to Jerry.
I support the eight second, but I do believe...
Jerry, can you use the microphone, please?
That works.
Can you hear me?
that we make static off-premise digital message change no faster than eight seconds. If I could get a second, I will explain.
We have a motion and a second for eight seconds for off-premise digital rotation.
Thank you.
And you have the floor.
I'm basing this on the fact that, like Jordan has indicated, and like I'm holding in my hand, the Federal Highway Administration has done extensive research on this, and they are comfortable with eight seconds until the data shows otherwise. Doing my own analysis, just to help people put it into perspective, between six, eight, ten, and sixty seconds, if the driver is looking at this billboard over a quarter of a mile doing, now let's see, thirty-five miles an hour, let's say, obviously, they would see one add in sixty seconds, they would see two in ten seconds, three in eight seconds, and four in six seconds. So I think that we're increasing safety by a little bit, mark, you know, hedging on the side of safety in alignment with what the Federal Highway Administration suggests without impacting somebody's business, because, I mean, quite honestly, we have impacted a business in, in the initiated measures that passed last summer. I don't want to add insult to injury, if you will, so again, this is something that the data substantiates. Thank you.
And we'll, we'll go to Jerry.
I support the eight second, but I do believe. That works.
Do you hear me?
Is it working?
Thank you. Charity? Charity's got the mic. I could support the eight second rule. I also feel that to set this at sixty seconds on off-premise only, I think is arbitrary and not fair. I could own a business, and I could have an on-premise sign, I could lease out some property, have an off-premise sign. I could have a display on it that runs every eight seconds or six seconds, and the other one couldn't run but every sixty seconds. It's not fair. I think we need to have uniformity, on-premise and off-premise, and I think the people of this community want to see somewhat of a cleanup in their signage throughout the community, and I think it need to be fair across the board, on-premise, off-premise, where we can. It's only fair. To split it and say sixty seconds for off-premise, let on-premise do what they want, isn't fair, and I don't think it'll hold up for one minute elsewhere. Thank you.
We'll go to Joel Landy.
Thank you, Mayor. The way this section we're discussing is currently written, the application of the time and the static would be applicable to off-premise and existing public purpose signs. Would you want to include the public purpose signs in that? And then the second part, some comments that Alderman Wright made. The courts have upheld, you can make distinctions between on and off-premise signs, you can legally treat them differently. Now, you may not want to for other reasons, but legally, I believe you can. One of the discussions we had in, in one of the other ordinances, and we talk about it later, one of the requirements that I put in there is that for on-premise digital, it decreases the maximum size that's allowable, and essentially, the size of the signs that are allowed for on-premise, and the majority of the on-premise signs, really aren't suitable for static digital messages. They're too small, so it's not like the big two-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot billboard that gets flashed. It's generally text, maybe some graphics or some effects that happen in between the slides changing, but you're really not talking a video where it's up there. It's, it's usually writing, it's a message that they're trying to convey, and it's meant to be viewed much closer. Mr. Farrar, I know is in the audience, and he could probably explain it much better than I could, but that's something to take into consideration when you're considering what to do with the on, off-premise and public purpose signs. The other thing I'll say is, the only sign that's on-premise that I'm aware of that really functions like billboard, where they have a large display, where they display static, is the Adova Eco Hotel on-premise sign, and based on the changes I've made, really, that would not be allowed in the future, another sign like that for an on-premise sign. So just when you take into consideration how to treat the on, off, and, and public purpose, perhaps take that into consideration.
Can I answer your question? We'll go to John Roberts, and then we'll go to Dave, and then we'll go to Charity. Nothing further? Dave Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I see a, a very distinct difference between the on and off, and I, I think it's good that we clear the air on that because we could spend a lot of time tonight debating each one of these points on that issue alone. First and foremost, the size difference is going to drive a lot of the decisions that we make. The on-premise is a smaller sign. Additionally, it, it certainly has the, the disadvantage of motion, where the off-premise has the both size and motion involved. Joel, I, I guess I have a question. Would it be an appropriate time, what, what I think is, at least it was in my mind at this time, I guess we didn't get it into the motion before, maybe we need to have a, a separate motion, but for the purposes of governing the existing public purpose signs, it was my intent that they would be defined, or they would be governed by the same rules as the off-premise signs. And then I guess I'd like to see where the rest of the council is on that, because, you know, they, they've already qualified size-wise, motion-wise, you know, they, they look like they're, they look like a duck and walk like a duck. We should probably treat them like a duck.
Thank you, Mayor. If you look at what I had written in fifteen twenty-eight one seventy, it says, "Existing off-premise signs and public purpose signs displaying variable messages through the use of its internal illumination technology, or through light emitting diodes, liquid crystal displays, plasma image displays, or any other similar light emitting technology may only display static messages. Full motion images, graphics, or video are prohibited. Static copy on these signs may be changed at a minimum interval of ten seconds." Based on the motion, that would be changed to eight seconds. I would just like for clarity, if you, if you want to include the public purpose signs, I think you just need to acknowledge that as a friendly amendment, and I would keep all the language the same, except change the time from ten seconds to eight seconds based on the current motion on the table. If you do not want to include the public purpose signs, then I would take out the reference to the public purpose signs, and it would just simply refer to off-premise signs.
Joel, if we, if we, if we were to take out the verbiage of public purpose signs, where would they be governed then? I mean, if we take that verbiage out, where, where do we turn to find out where?
Right now, that, you know, that frankly is a good question, and there was some belief that by being a public purpose sign, it exempted you completely from the sign code, but what it really does is exempt you from a signed building permit. Does that mean that, in reality, these signs were built and they've operated a certain way? It's kind of bringing them under control and saying, this is where you're going to regulate them. If you don't, there is no other place where they're regulated.
So really, what we're doing with it, no matter what, is we've eliminated the opportunity for more theoretically tonight by that amendment. What we're doing is we're now encapsulating the couple dozen that are out on the, in the community or less, and making sure that we know how we're going to control those in the, in the foreseeable future, in the lifetime of those signs.
Correct. I believe the structures themselves are legal nonconforming. If you, if you take away the public purpose exception, we wouldn't want to try to go in and remove those. Likely would result in a claim of compensation is due. However, I do not believe that grandfathering applies to the operation of the sign. Done some research. Grandfathering applies to the sign structure itself, not how the sign is operated, so I believe it would be appropriate to go back and say, this is how these signs are going to operate in the future, keeping in mind that this would also be, be applicable to the civic center sign.
And the ones at the schools and churches around town.
Correct.
Some of those are miscellaneous, but some of them have been applied for and, and approved as public purpose.
Joel, if you could clarify, the ordinance currently says, as it's drafted, currently says ten seconds, and this amendment would take it to eight?
That's correct.
Bonnie Peterson?
I would like to make a substitute motion that we keep it at the ten seconds that we've previously agreed upon, and if I get a second, then I'd like to make further comments.
Technically, that, I believe that motion would be out of order because that, it's already in the ordinance at ten seconds, so if this amendment is voted down, then we would still be at, at ten seconds. So if a substitute motion on the, I, Joel, can you help me out with that? Right, you don't need, technically need the substitute motion because it's already in the original ordinance. If you're going to make a different time, then it would be, but if it's the same as what's already written, you wouldn't need a substitute motion. So
Okay.
Joel, can you confirm, confirm that?
Yes, I believe you're correct.
Bonnie, you still have the floor.
Okay. One of the factors that I think the mayor brought this forward, the sixty seconds, was in looking at how do we best honor the, the citizens' wishes that we have less digital, digital signs. And Ms. Doyle brought up, and I know that the highway talked about eight seconds, that they felt that was the, basically, the minimum. That doesn't mean it's the maximum, and I think we should err on the side of ten seconds. We've had that, and I believe in one of the public comments, the billboard company said that they were functioning just fine with no loss of, of revenue at that, and so I don't think it would hurt them, and I think it would just add a little bit more of a safety factor for our citizens, and so I would encourage us to keep it at the ten seconds. Thank you.
John Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support Charity's eight seconds. I think that's a great compromise between the six and the ten, because I wasn't too comfortable with the ten the first time we talked about it. And the sixty, I think is ridiculous, in my opinion. But I just wanted to let everyone know that the eight second is what I'm going to support. I would like to ask somebody from Lamar what the difference would be between six seconds and sixty seconds as far as their revenue.
I am Doug Rumsel with Lamar, but I guess, to be honest with you, I really don't even know how to answer that. I would have to go.
Top of your head, any ideas? Just, you know, would, would your percentage go up twenty percent on your ads? Would it go up fifty percent on your ads? Would it go up a hundred percent on your ads? Because we're, we're raising it a hundred percent from six seconds to sixty seconds.
Yeah, again, I, I don't even know how to guess, but it would be substantial, so.
Okay, thank you.
John, you still have the floor.
I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll go to Joel Landy.
Thank you, Mayor. Little food for thought when you're trying to compare it apples to apples. They could obviously play a lot more messages at six seconds, but you're assuming then that the price would be the same for a six-second advertisement and a sixty-second advertisement. The revenue may not decrease at all because they would probably just charge more for the sixty-second advertisement and make up that difference, but you would have less. So, so ultimately, the, the people purchasing the advertisement would probably be playing more, but they would be getting a longer advertisement than they're currently getting. But my guess is they would probably adjust it so the revenue was about equal.
We'll go to Ron Sasso.
There we go. Sorry. Okay, to muddy the water, could I make a substitute motion to increase the time length to fifteen seconds?
You can.
I would like to do that.
Do we have a second? Is there a second? We have a motion and a second? Ron, you still have the floor. It's for fif- fifteen seconds.
I only have the floor for fifteen seconds? Okay. A couple, couple things here, and, and I, same thing, I think, with everybody, trying to find the balance between what, what citizens want, safety, and also understanding business interests. One of the things in looking at some of the research that is out there indicates that even though one point four seconds is the amount of time that a person is distracted, as far as a driver, when they are looking at a digital sign, it, basically, at thirty miles per hour, you know, you're looking, that's sixty feet that a person is, over sixty feet a person is traveling, where they're not looking at the road. The other thing in that, the federal research, though crash statistics are looking at it, two seconds, near crash.
Ron, can I interrupt for a moment?
Sorry.
Richie, would you mind giving that to Brett Limbaugh, if that's okay, and we can make copies for the, if that's okay? Is it all right if we make copies of that? Is that okay, Charity?
And I didn't get that note, but, but no, near crash statistics indicate that near crash happens at distractibility about one-point-three seconds. So just looking from the safety standpoint, I know even any change we're still looking at, there's a risk anytime there's a change in, in a sign, but minimizing that, and even looking at fifteen seconds, one every, you know, basically, four per minute.
Any further discussion on the motion? We'll go to Jordan, and we'll go to Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm going to challenge the motion maker on this. I think it's pretty clear that not only does the Federal Highway, you know, agency clearly think that our Federal Highway Administration, you know, based on evidence and extensive research going back to, what was it? This started in two thousand and seven, so over a period of, of several years, going over this, clearly has come up with a, a number based on what seems to be an acceptable time for the intermittent change. But I guess, the thing that I, I guess I would quote, good quote here, but I like to stand on the shoulders of giants, and there's extensive research here, there's a lot of backing evidence to stand on that, and so I guess I would challenge the motion maker to explain to me and the rest of this body whether, what sort of evidence do you have, sir, to back the distinction of fifteen seconds? And, you know, based on what reasoning? Because you claim safety, so please provide the evidence and the proof.
Ron, it's up to you if you want to answer that.
Oh, sure. Why not? Just for the fun of it. Basically, given, given, even though the, the national standards, as far as the research, and I'll quote, "It is important to note that the confidence limit surrounding the, the point estimate odds ratio values are fairly large, indicating the odds ratio may in fact be somewhat higher or lower." So looking at that, that there is a greater risk potentially at that one-point-four-second distractibility, the fifteen seconds, I think, I think it's looking, what I'm looking at is just trying to lower overall risk. If we had the billboard static all day, the risk is significantly lower. But at fifteen seconds, I look at, I feel that is a reasonable balance between the two. There are more and more distracted distractions that are happening today than there were probably even when this research was originally started, because there's more cell phone usage, there's, there's more texting and so forth. So given that, I believe it is a prudent, it is prudent for us to look at something that would be a little safer, a little safer, and yet not totally, not looking at damaging a business, but making it a little safer, safer for drivers, and yet still having, having something that's balanced.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. I guess, actually, based on the explanation, I'll just state my objections really quickly, as quickly as I can, but you talk about wanting a balance, and I think it's very clear at this point that not only, when you talk about not wanting to damage a business, but in this economic state that our country is currently in, which is very fragile, I, I think it's a little odd that we're talking about not only limiting the amount of product that can be sold, but we've already explored the idea that the price would then influx. We're also based, in this area, based on a tourism economy. We talk about it extensively here, and I remember reading a story by Wrigley gum manufacturer, which talked about, they were riding in a train, and one of his assistants said, "Why do you pay so much for advertising?" And he said, "Well, how does this train run?" And he said, "By putting the coals into the engine," and he said, "So you don't quit putting the coals in the engine." It made the company run. The same could probably be argued here for this tourism economy here, is that the mom-and-pop shops that bring in that tourism economy to our area do rely on a cheap, affordable way to advertise their business and, and services and goods. As such, I, I think that it's more prudent to rely on researched and evidenced, you know, basis to make a, not only, to find that balance that provides not only for balancing the economic interests that are very dear to making the city run, but in addition, the safety concerns of the citizens, which, again, I'll stand on the shoulders of some giants here, but I'll stand on the top of the federal administration. Thank you.
And then we'll go to Jerry Wright? And then we'll go to Bonnie? And then we'll go to Ron.
The eight-second rule appears to be substantiated by the Federal Highway, and I don't Eight-second rule is separated or substantiated? Eight-second rule is separated or substantiated by Federal Highway data.
The eight seconds is supported by data, Federal Highway data. I think anything that we do different is our opinion and not probably well substantiated. I think it's punitive to the businesses and to the companies. I think we should stay at the eight inch, and we need to, eight seconds. We need to be careful that our job is to protect the public safety, but we have to do it with reasonable data and supportive data. And we can't be going out on a limb because we think something, and make a decision is punitive. So I think the eight-second rule with the Federal Highway data is supportive. I, I think we ought to go that way. Thank you.
And we'll go to Bonnie Peters.
Thanks. I would like to ask perhaps Lisa Modric with a question about tourism. That would be okay?
Go ahead and ask your question.
I don't know.
Counsel, Lisa Modric.
I don't know if you were able to hear Mr. Mason about tourism and advertising. And are there, there states that ban advertising that are very tourist-related? Do you know which ones those are?
Yeah, there's Hawaii, Alaska, Maine, Vermont. Actually, there's a few more also that are looking at the same thing. Tourism has not been relying on this type of signage, including in our own tourism region. And I've talked to many of the sign, the sign owners in the tourism businesses that have been on billboards for many, many years, and they don't feel that in a city is a good place for their signage. So you'll notice that on tourism, many times it's on the interstates, things to draw attention to their attractions, but not necessarily in the city limits. So you won't see, if any, tourism in the city limits trying to draw business here. It's, any of them that have spoken to me, the large businesses are saying it's not, not good advertising for them.
And when, and so Rapid City has a large tourist industry, and.
There are two in the state.
Okay. And so what is the number one complaint you've heard from tourists here in this area?
The number one complaint, and this is recorded by the state of South Dakota in, in our region, is that there are too many billboards, and they question everything from our visitor centers to our rest stops, where there's also visitor, visitor centers as well. They write it in publications that go out amongst the nation, and the question continues to come back in tourism. Why does our beautiful Black Hills absorb itself with so many billboards? And I think that's something to be cautious of, and I think you're going to find that the industry is changing on how they're advertising, the tourism industry is. There's something called TODs, it's tourist-oriented directional signs. This is what the highway departments are doing across the country, including in South Dakota, and that's where you're taking the signage and putting it on a board that is more directional, and isn't that what we want, is directional signs to get them to our attractions.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa, very much. So I guess my argument would be, is one, our, our area is very dependent on tourism. And so we talk about the companies, I understand this, the billboard companies, I don't want to see them go out of business, they make, you know, they want, I want them to make money. And like I said, one of the billboard companies in this public letter said that they're doing just fine. So my question is, to us, is that what about all the other hundreds or thousands of businesses here in the, in the Rapid City area? The diners, the people, the hotels that make money off of tourists that come here? The tourists don't like billboards. So every time one of these digital signs changes, it's another billboard. Our citizens don't like the digital signs. And so that is why I would much, much, much prefer us to go back to the, at least the 10 seconds, to minimize, because we can't be so narrow-minded that we look at just a few, a handful of businesses. We need to look at the huge economy that tourism brings into our area, and that this decision is good business for, for Rapid City and the Black Hills, because we don't want to have a reputation of being a billboard city, which our tourists don't like. So please try to think a little bigger and vote to support a longer timeframe for these sign changes. Thank you.
Ron Sasso.
One of the things that, even though we're looking at the research and the timeframes, couple things to consider. One, if research in the future comes out that indicates distractibility, time is more significant, then this is something we would be needing to revisit, I believe, and looking at lengthening of the timeframes. Another factor that I believe is very important, South Dakota, the driving age is 14. At age 14, the brain, particularly the executive functioning, is not fully developed. This is an area of significant concern, distractibility, attention and concentration. That's why, looking at this, extending that time a little bit more, I believe adds a little bit of safety to that. It adds a little bit of cushion. If research changes down the road, we're not having to scramble. I don't believe it is, it is putting undue stress on a business, that, and that's, that's my feeling. You know, it, it's, but, but there again, the age of drivers, at, young drivers are much more distractible, and I'm going to bet that they were not included, 14-year-olds were likely not included in the research, so.
Gary Bowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I can remember what I was going to say. My hand up about a half hour ago. We're tending to drift here quite a bit, from getting rid of the billboards, to time factor, to 14-year-olds, to that. I cannot support the current substitute motion on it. I think eight seconds is a good compromise between what the feds and the state say we should have. I'm going to support the eight-second compromise in that. The greatest threat, in my opinion, to the billboards, and that, in this world of technology, is going to be the GPSs, the, the small little handheld things and that, that I saw come in and out of my motel the last five years I had it. People are following that and going around. And I'm sure both Lamar and Epic are very, very aware, that potential impact is coming. South Dakota will be the last, but we'll have them in there. So I won't be supporting your, your motion, Ron. Thank you.
Jordan? Please keep your comments brief.
May I call the question?
You may.
Great. I'm calling it.
The question's been called. We are now going to proceed directly to the, the vote on the motion for, substitute motion for 15 seconds. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed? Motion fails with two yeses from Sasso and Peterson. I miss anyone? Okay?
Excuse me. Can you clarify who voted aye?
Ron Sasso and Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you.
We are now on the, we are now on the substitute motion for eight seconds. Does the debate continue, or is the question? Go ahead, Joel. Okay, can the motion maker please make? Who, who is the motion maker on the eight-second motion? Charity Doyle? And this applies to the public purpose. Charity, you have the floor.
I'm thinking. This would be only for future public purpose signs?
No.
No. No, because the timing, the timing is not grandfathered. All right.
Okay. Bonnie Peterson? On the eight seconds? Bonnie, did you want to speak? If I, if I could make a comment before we proceed to the vote, I think it's important to know why I and others brought, brought this forward. First of all, the voters of Rapid City said no overwhelmingly last year on a two-thirds vote to more digital billboards. And I know that the billboard companies and some of the folks involved, I know quite well, and have expressed a concern about the, you know, the, the lack of a, of a give and take and the solutions that have cost them revenue and have increased issues for them. This solution, although it's not a perfect solution, it is a solution that doesn't theoretically cost the billboard companies revenue, and also puts the voters in a better position should Senate Bill 157 come back in some form in the next legislative session, which it probably will, and if the initiated measures are thrown out in part or in whole, that this is a timeframe that would survive of 60 seconds or 15 seconds. But I think going from 10 seconds to eight is a mistake. I understand that the FHA standards are standard, and I appreciate Charity for passing those out, and we'll make sure we get these linked. I understand, you know, that these, these standards are a factor. We also have our dedicated staff that took a look at our traffic signal timing, and 60 seconds seems like a reasonable timeframe to consider that doesn't ta, is, doesn't constitute a takings. It is a regulation, but doesn't constitute a takings. And so I, I would ask you to strongly consider at least not taking a step back from what the sign committee has recommended of, of 10 seconds. I think going from 10 seconds to eight seconds is, is a mistake. With that being said, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood the, the motive behind bringing this forward. Any further discussion?
Steve Laurenti.
I just wanted to speak on support for the eight seconds. I, and I appreciate your words, Mayor, and the problem I have is the limitation that we're putting on these businesses already, and I fully support the initiatives, the referendums that the voters passed last year, and I'm more than willing to make sure that those are followed. But I don't think the, I don't think the voters would have ever dreamed that we would be talking about the number of seconds that we're trying to micromanage these processes, especially when we get to on-premise, and that'll, I'll, I'll reserve most of my comments when we get there. But I don't think that, that the voters thought about, I think if we asked them, they'd be like, they would have no idea what to tell us how long a static message should be on the sign. I don't think that they're concerned about that. I think they're concerned about more digital billboard signs, which is what they voted for, and I support that 110%, but we're starting to micromanage a business that we should not be, and I'm going to support the eight seconds. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is substitute, or a motion for eight seconds, which amends the original ordinance which said 10. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries with two noes from Sasso and Peterson. Okay? All right. Item number two, under items from mayor and city council, should sign contractors be on the appeals board? And I'd like to first go to Brett Limbaugh. We're basically going to combine this item along with the second to the last item, which is eliminate the Sign Code Board of Appeals. If there's any objections to combining those two items, please speak now. Okay? Brett, could you please introduce this item and tell us your thoughts?
Yeah, several weeks back, our department had given you a memorandum stating that we were going to look at committee consolidation. And right now, there are nearly 30 boards, committees and commissions that our department supports. 16 of those are standing committees, and we felt it necessary at this point to do some consolidation. The items you have in front of you tonight, one of them talks about whether or not sign contractors should be made part of the Board of Appeals. And further on down the agenda, you have the question as to whether or not the Sign Code Board of Appeals should be eliminated. In our initial research, I would suggest, and probably will bring forward a recommendation that you combine the Sign Code Board of Appeals and the Building Board of Adjustment into a single unit. Difference between the Sign Code Board of Appeals is if they were to turn down a appeal, then that could be made, another appeal could be made to the city council. The Board of Adjustment, on the other hand, is quasi-judicial, so if they decide to deny an appeal, then the next avenue would be to the court system. Most cities do not have separate board for their sign issues. They, they send those to the Board of Adjustments, so I think that's a logical recommendation, and that's what I'd like you to consider tonight.
And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Brett has done quite an outstanding job of doing that second-floor consolidation committee review, and I read the report quite thoroughly, and, and I appreciate his indulgence with all the questions I've asked him. And one of the other things that we need to take in consideration for the consolidation is the stat, amount of staff time that's being put in on all these committees that are, that are meeting, and such as the Sign Code Board of Appeals, and then the Mechanical Board, the Electrical Board, and everything else that this Brett has to deal with. And there's a lot of staff time that's utilized in that, so with the consolidation of those committees, we can, I believe we can free up a lot of Brett's staff for, such as a larger oversight committee, and that won't be, also will not be dominated by one particular group on a single board. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield.
Thank you, Richie. Do we have a motion? We'll go to Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we leave 15.28.260 as it exists at this point with the anticipation that Brett will be bringing forward some new language that we can put arms around to consolidate.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Nordstrom to leave 15.28.260 as is, with the understanding that Brett Limbaugh and the city attorney's office will be bringing forward amendments in the near future to eliminate the Sign, Sign Code Board of Appeals, or combine the Sign Code Board of Appeals with the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and the ordinance will stay the same for now. We'll now go to issues of discussion with the public. We've already pretty much covered item one, haven't we, Joel? Okay? We'll, we'll move on to item number two. We've already covered that. Item number three, increase off-premise license fee to $200. What is the fee now? 75? Okay. Joel?
Just one of the things that have been raised by members of the public, I believe it was in the materials submitted by Lisa Modric on behalf of the scenic Rapid City group. Considerations, I think when the task force recommendations initially came forward, or perhaps it was in the task force, there was a lot of discussion about this. I think the council or the task force asked for some information on enforcement and how much it costs. Keep in mind, for it to be a fee, it needs to cover the cost of administration, and if the costs exceed the cost for administration, then it becomes a tax. So that, that's the consideration you really need to look at and what you need to be aware of when you discuss what the fee is.
Okay. John Roberts.
Well, this is a question for Brett, then. This is very easy. What's it cost to administrate this, Brett?
Well, I'm glad you asked.
Thank you.
This sign code enforcement is actually not done through our department, done through community research. I talked to Jeff Barbeer this afternoon and asked him what he had in that particular cost center for sign code, and that is staffed at $40,022. cost center for sign code, and that is staffed at $40,022. So if you look at the total number of signs, essentially it's roughly 250. At $75 current fee, that only captures $18,000, a little over $18,000 of that $40,000. So if you just do the math, I think you need charging about $160 for the permit in order to hit that $40,000 cost.
$160. One sixty. One sixty.
Yes.
Yes, one sixty.
John, you still have the four. Dave Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only problem I have with this is that we're charging a fee to the wrong person. And I'm not trying to put a fee on the private business owner, but the majority of, when I've checked with code enforcement, the majority of the code enforcement time is not spent on the off-premise sign. And yet, it's only the off-premise sign that pays the fee. So we're charging a fee to the person who, by and large, isn't the violator. I'm struggling with that concept. And that, Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that the understanding that I've got, is that most of the time spent is on on-premise sign issues?
I believe that's correct. The situation is, every year, there's a certain amount of time that's needed to do the licensing, check, check the signs, follow up, and do that. So there is a cost to that, and I don't know what specifically that is. As far as violations and following up on violations, I would say the majority of the violations and the complaints are with the on-premise signage. So the code enforcement, the actual code enforcement actions, as far as the administering, once you issue the permit for an on-premise sign, the work on it's done unless there's a violation. Whereas for the off-premise signs, there are expenses every year for administering the licensing program and making sure that everyone gets licensed. But you really have two off-premise companies in town who know the game, they know that they have to get licensed, and they generally do. And so there isn't, I don't think, a whole lot of administrative work following up on that.
I guess in following up on that, to use the calculation that was used earlier, where we take the total expense of that department, divide by the number of off-premise signs that we're collecting a fee for, it's apples and oranges. I mean, we're taking a cost center from one side and an income center from a different side and trying to extrapolate a cost per, and they're two different places here. So I'm really struggling there.
Joel?
If I may make a suggestion, Andy Klebek from the Code Enforcement Division actually does the majority of this, and these are probably questions better directed. So perhaps, for tonight's purposes, we leave the fee where it's at with the understanding that at the next legal and finance meeting, or the next meeting at which this is discussed, regular meeting, we have Andy there, and perhaps he can get better prepared, and we can explore some of these issues of cost and how much is actual administration of the off-premise signs, and then that cost center is divided up.
Anything else? Okay. We'll go to Steve Laurenti, and then we'll go to Charity, and then we'll go to Jerry.
Well, I don't know if we... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think, I don't know if we need a motion. I don't think we're just discussing this item, so I just wanted to...
A motion to acknowledge would be fine.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Davis. Any discussion on the motion to acknowledge? We will get more information later. All three of you want to speak on a motion to acknowledge? Charity, go ahead.
I'm just thinking out loud for us to consider at that legal and finance meeting. I'm wondering if it would be more prudent to have a per-square-foot price, whatever that is, and cover both on and off-premise for enforcement purposes. I don't know what you guys would dig up to look at for the formula for that, but is that something that could potentially be explored, or have you done that?
Well, the problem is, every year, you have the expense, and if you don't have a yearly license, then you don't, then you don't have the income. You have a lot of income in the year the signs come in, but I don't know that that would be enough. If you have one year where you have a lot of sign permits, you'd have a lot of income, and then one year where you didn't, you would have less, and it might not be sufficient. I mean, that's kind of how the system, I think, developed the way it is now. Be very difficult to track all the on-premise signs in town. In fact, there's no database that would currently tell us where every on-premise sign is. So it would be nearly impossible to go back and then try to capture a fee on on-premise signs. Difficult problem, and I don't think we're going to solve it tonight. So probably better to delay the discussion, and frankly, I'm not even sure we'll be able to solve it at that time. But we at least have more information for you to base your decision on.
But the discussion, I guess I'm asking, will entail potentially both? None of the above? I mean, something that is going to make it, in every attempt to make it fair, is what I'm looking at.
What I would envision is that Andy would have broken out what it costs to, and I think he's already done this, at least if not for this group, for the Sign Code Task Force, how much is actually spent on administering the off-premise signs and what that cost is. And then we can talk about the money in the cost center, if all that money goes to on-premise signs or, excuse me, off-premise signs, or if it actually is spent on both. But I think when we have the numbers, that'd also allow me to give you better advice as far as what legally is appropriate for an off-premise sign fee.
We'll go to Ron Sasso, and then Bonnie.
Two things, I guess, just for us to consider and to get the information. One, as far as if we're looking per pole, per sign, per side, like face of the billboard, I think that's something we want to look at. And then, does this time count? Just from the standpoint of administration of when we're looking at the amount of time that has been put into revising code has been significant. And I don't know, I'm just throwing that out as whether or not that would fall under there, or it's just administration of licensing, so.
I would say that the time for public policy debate does not count as part of the fee. My opinion. Let's go to Jerry Wright. Yes.
I heard the same message. Is it working?
No. Go ahead.
Okay.
The motion is to acknowledge, Jerry.
I know. I want to say, I have the same message that Dave had, that I had heard that from several sources. And it really bothers me that we have those that are obeying the speed limit paying the speeding fines, so to speak, figuratively. And I think one message that I've gotten out of this in talking to people is, we need to be fair across the board, on-premise, off-premise. What is good for the goose is good for the gander and so forth. This is far from fair. So rather than just discussion, I would hope that would come back to us a package that will solve this problem. If we legitimately need the money to inspect and enforce our signs, let's equitably collect it from all signs that are involved, not just a few, because it's not fair. That's what I want to see. Not just a discussion, I want a solution.
Bonnie Peterson?
Joel, one thing when you're looking up too is, I know our discussions here don't count, but what about lawsuits and the time that we go? Because since I've been on the council, we've been frequently sued by off-premise companies. And so anyway, if you could give us information about that. Thank you.
Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I appreciate the idea of having a square footage determination for the amount of fee, but I think we'll need to also consider if they're electrical sign, if they're a lighted sign, the time that the staff has to be on-site, and then also include the support time that the staff has to put in on this as well. So if we would include that in part of the computations, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. The motion is to acknowledge.
Let's not collect a fee and not do anything with it. If we're going to do something constructively and charge a fee, that's fair, but let's just not collect it to collect it. In other words, have a plan, if we're going to collect a fee, we're going to do something about enforcement, compliance, and all that. If we're not going to do it, don't collect it. And it's got to be fair.
Since many people have commented on the motion to acknowledge, I feel compelled to mention, I would just like to mention from a philosophical standpoint that the goal of the fees is to cover a cost. And once it goes beyond covering a cost, it turns into a tax. And so I am in favor of covering the cost, and we can bring that information back, but what I'm not in favor of is turning it into a tax. Any other discussions on the motion to acknowledge? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the item is acknowledged. Item number five, structural alterations which do not require permit should include repairing or updating the current electrical wiring on an existing sign. I'd like to start off a discussion on this one just by mentioning two points. One is, is that we have spent a great deal of time as a council and in my administration working on trying to consolidate and consolidate and make our code enforcement a better operation. And I think to allow a situation where you can have billboards out there deteriorating because we will not allow routine maintenance on those boards, I think creates a problem and ultimately might not be right away, but within a number of years, it could create an issue of blight. Secondly, as someone who has, it was many years ago, but who has experienced an electrocution in the family, I think that having, and I don't mean to use an emotional appeal, but I think having updated wiring within the confines of the latest electrical codes, I think is important. So I strongly support, I know I'm 0-for-1 tonight, but I strongly support an amendment that allows the sign companies to keep the wiring updated within the current electrical code. And I think that the City Attorney's Office can work on language that keeps it from being considered, you know, upgrades in the sense of, you know, it needs to keep up with a code, but it doesn't need to necessarily be new technology. But I strongly support doing this, and I hope the council does as well. So with that being said, I'll... Jerry, okay, we have a motion by Jerry Wright and a second by Bonnie Peterson to ask the City Attorney's Office to draft language, because we probably won't be able to amend it on the fly here. Joel, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk. I've had a conversation with Lamar, and one of the things they're talking about is also, to some degree, a little bit of new technology. They have a national initiative right now where they're trying to update all their billboards. So not even talking just about the digital ones, but the normal static billboard face that's lit externally. They're trying to automate all the lighting. So rather than having to go out and manually do them or set a timer that isn't very flexible, it would essentially make the lights adjust every day to sunrise, sunset. So that's really what they're looking for right now, too, is to be able to retrofit everything, which is actually an energy savings and things. So is that, as long as that's all right, and I know that's all right, yes, I will just come up with some language, and I will bring it back, and you will have a chance to debate it and look at it when this comes forward for further discussion.
Okay. Everyone understands the motion, and this isn't being amended tonight. It will be, it will come back because it has to be drafted first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now going to take a 10-minute break, unless there's any fierce disagreement. We'll go first to Charity Doyle.
I have a question for Joel, if I may. I have some, like, cleanups and other things to submit. Would it just be more appropriate to submit those?
Yeah, if it's not a philosophical, if it's just a cleanup or something you've caught, you can just email those to me, and if appropriate, I'll make the changes. I already made some that you had sent me previously that...
Well, some of them are actually going to be dependent upon what comes out of the next couple of discussions. So, you know, obviously, the stuff in 5779 is going to be, need to be massaged based on what comes out of the other two. So be appropriate to come back to them, then.
Well, anything you want to send me, you can. If it's something that I don't feel I was directed to do and goes beyond just cleanup or whatever, then I would probably let you know that and suggest that you bring that back to a meeting, or we could put something together to bring back to the meeting. But if it's just general cleanup, or maybe I would suggest you word it this way, and I agree that that carries out the intent, it's a better way to word it, I would certainly take a look at that and just bring it back in the next draft.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to reconvene shortly. If everyone could please take their seats.
Wait, what? We're pacing ourselves. Pacing. I know. And it's my wife's birthday. Probably by the time I get home, she'll be a year old.
I mean, I'm going to do... Well, no, it works.
Everything's for sale.
For the right price, right?
All right, we'll reconvene the meeting. We are now talking about ordinance number 5808, an ordinance regulating on-premise signage by adding Chapter 15.29 of the municipal code. And we'll first go to Joel Landine for introduction of Items One and Two.
Item number one is, do you want to allow animation or motion on on-premise digital reader boards? A lot of the discussion, part of, again, what I did when I wrote this, and I put in a size restriction on the digital reader boards. And the idea is, at a certain size, it does not become economically feasible for them to sell off-premise advertising or put videos or what you consider what you're seeing on the larger off-premise advertising billboards. And Eric Farrar from Rosenbaum Signs handed out something that shows the high mark sign. I'll just pass it around. It kind of gives an example of a public purpose display and also the kind of animation you see on, or visual you see on those type of signs. But currently, the way I was directed to prepare it, all that is allowed is written text, no motion. So if it's written text and it's not scrolling, it must be static, and I believe it was for six seconds. And then if it's scrolling, it can scroll up or down, but again, it can't have any transitions or pictures or graphics. It just has to be written text. You know, a lot of them, what you see is flags, or in the fall, leaves falling, or things like that. Really is just a question of how much you want to allow and how much you feel comfortable with.
We'll start with Steve Laurenti.
I'd like to make a motion to add the language to allow animation and/or motion on on-premise digital reader boards.
We have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Doyle. And Steve, you still have the four.
And I just wanted to... And I just wanted to speak to this, because I think I've spoken about it many times before, and all of us have had some of the businesses, and those business owners, talk about the investment that they have made on these signs that have this ability. And so, we just need to understand that, I think, a large number, as I drive around, have this ability, and they've testified in front of us that if the ordinance, you know, disallowed these types of things, or if they had known before they bought their sign and invested thousands of dollars, difference in some of the signs that are capable of doing this kind of advertising, they wouldn't have spent that money, had they had this situation here. So, we need to keep that in mind, that we have a lot of businesses that have invested thousands of dollars purely because those signs have that ability. And again, I think we're just going a little bit too far, especially as we start stepping into the on-premise signs, because as we all know, the initiated measures, or the referendums, were not worded or sold as micromanaging on-premise signs for individual businesses. I yield the floor, thank you.
And we'll go to Charity Doyle?
No, I have to go.
Okay. We'll go to Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. And allowing this animation motion, that size of the sign come in at all?
Thank you. Joel?
Well, if you approve the draft that is currently in front of you, there is a size limitation, and I believe it's 40 square feet. Now, I know that I've been contacted by some of the representatives, the sign companies, questioning whether that's the appropriate size. Frankly, I kind of took a stab in the dark, based on what I thought the majority of them were, or would fit into, that we currently have, except for, obviously, the larger, really large one that is down on the corner of Rushmore Road and Main Street. But, there's some conversation about whether 60 feet would be appropriate, 60 square feet, which would be about 6 by 10. Ultimately, I think that's up to you, but yeah, I think that you tie it to size, that you don't... What seems clear to me from the discussion is that the current reader boards that are on the on-premise, that are truly on-premise reader boards, that most people are okay with those, it's, they don't want to create a situation where you have a bunch of on-premise billboards that encourage people to then sell advertising to off-premise, really, what amounts to off-premise advertising, and then use a loophole, like, well, we sell Coke onsite, so we can advertise Coke. But it's really not advertising Coke being sold on the premises, but general Coca-Cola, or whatever the product may be. If you decrease the size, I think you discourage that type of advertising, because you don't have the video, you don't have the picture, you don't, if you try to just put a static, it's too small, it's not really conveying the message they want to convey.
May I ask Eric Farrar for his input on that? He seemed to have definite, things that he's found in being in the business.
Okay.
And I'd just like to hear his comments on that.
If you could restate your question.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes, sir.
Do you think size of signs should have something to do with this, minimum, maximum?
Well, I do, and I think we talked originally about being possibly 100 square feet. But I'd be honest with you, and I think Joel had a great idea, what the limitation would actually discourage people from trying to run third-party advertising on an on-premise sign. And the sample I showed you with Highmark was basically 50 square feet on that sign, 50 to 52 square feet, I think. So, I mean, I'd be honest with you, I think that something in the 60 square foot would be within reason. And other thoughts on that were, if it were larger than that, and there are times, interstate locations, whatnot, that will justify a larger sign, there are variances for that potential if there's hardship, and if nothing else, anything over a certain size should be static. On-premise, understoodable, or understood. I just think, and maybe that number is 100 square feet, but there's different places, different applications, and I believe that, you know, our sign business, anyway, could live with that square footage allowance. I don't know about each individual business, but I don't think 50 to 60 square foot is outlined. Hope that helps.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
We'll go to Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, Steve, to allow animation on on-premise signs of 60 square feet or less, and add to that, that any on-premise sign over 60 square feet, that animation would be prohibited.
Second. Well, we have a friendly amendment, that's okay with the motion maker, Steve Laurenti? Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's okay with the seconder?
Yeah.
Okay, and so, everyone understands the friendly amendment? It's been accepted, so now we have an amended motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Dave, you still have the floor. Okay? Any further discussion? All in, with Richie Nordstrom?
Thank you, Mayor. I've just got a question about, do we have a definition of what animation is? Do we have a definition? I think we do have what motion is. Do we have that available?
There's a definition in there, I might want to take a look at it between now and the next meeting. One thing I would caution, I think the motion might have unintended consequences. Again, going back to what I feel that, the general sense of, that I've received from talking to you folks, and people in the public, the on-premise billboard, I would just caution you that, I think, under the amendment, you could still do that, because the size of the, of the on-premise sign is based on your frontage and other factors. So, the Adova Eco Hotel had a lot of frontage, and they could have a pretty big sign. Even if you say there's no animation, you could still have a video sign, then, that displayed static messages, so it essentially would operate exactly as the sign's operating now, with static transferring between static messages. So what I had done was put in a restriction that said the sign couldn't, the video or the digital on the on-premise couldn't be over a certain size. Not, I felt, and I'm not saying that's the only way to prevent that, I just have a concern that Alderman Davis says motion, if that's what, you think it's going to prevent that, that it may not. And, because you could, you could rotate through static messages, then, that would not be animation, and would not be scrolling, it would just be a static message, static message, but it would be large video picture. So it would function almost exactly like a billboard at that point.
Let's go to Dave Davis.
Thank you for the clarification, Joel. I guess I was looking at that coming as the next point, the next bullet point to discuss, and that was selling advertising on on-premise, but if you feel that that needs to be part of the same motion, I can certainly address it at this time.
Well, again, it wasn't really on there, but if you want to talk about animation on a certain sized sign, the question is, do you want to limit the size of the sign, or do you want to... It all kind of flows together, and the on- or off-premise advertising, that's going to be difficult to enforce. Right now, we have a definition, and it's a pretty universal definition, and it allows a code enforcement officer to go out there and look at a sign, and make a determination without any other information, whether the sign is in compliance or not. When you start talking about selling off-premise advertising, it becomes more difficult, because then you're relying on having to go in and try to find documents and evidence that isn't readily available to you, which is going to be difficult, contracts and things like that. I will also say, there are certainly ways they could creatively structure agreements, where the argument would be, well, we're not selling advertising, we're selling the sign. And I think that is pretty much the way the current situation with the sign that we're talking about is set up, where the argument is, we're not selling off-premise advertising, what we're doing is, we're getting the proceeds from the sign to pay for the sign itself. So, you know, there's creative ways, so that, I think it wouldn't hurt to have something in there that says, you cannot sell off-premise, you cannot sell advertising on your on-premise sign, so that if it became an obvious situation, or a situation we were aware of, then we could have some enforcement tools. But, really, I think if you want to prevent something like an on-premise billboard, then the way to go is limit the size and, of the sign, and then the question is, what is the proper limitation on that sign size? I think Eric made a valid point. I know there's been some talk about eliminating the variance board, but I don't think ultimately that's going to happen. It'll probably be combined with the current variance board. That is the reason you have a variance board, is you have a general limitation, and you say, this is appropriate. As Mr. Farrar pointed out, and I had a discussion at our last council meeting, the size of a sign really should be dependent on the speed of the roadway in which it's being viewed. So, if you're talking about a sign in downtown Rapid City, it probably doesn't need to be as large to be viewed appropriately. If you have a sign that's along the interstate, it's going to need to be larger. So those would be the type of situations where you would have a variance board, and they could look at it, and if something needed to be bigger, they would make that decision. And then the applicant would have to come in and make their case to show why it should be larger than what you allow. But if you establish a minimum size, that's something that later, you could potentially get a variance to. Now, that also creates the problem that, at some point, they may grant a variance to a sign that people don't think is appropriate, and then, of course, as council members, you're all going to hear about that. But, just some considerations to think about as you're deciding how to handle this.
So, once again, I'll go back to my question. Do you want to deal with this as an additional amendment, or deal with it as point two in the, as a separate item? Because, basically, I've got a way to address it, that I think may be workable, and whether we have it as part of this amendment, in which case I can read it in now, or we can do it as a separate item?
Perhaps it is appropriate just to have the whole discussion now, because I'm worried about getting directions that are somewhat inconsistent. And right now, the way that I read this is, if you have a sign under 60 square feet, you don't have animation, that implies that you could have a sign over 60 square feet, and if that isn't going to be the case, then that resolves that, but then I have the problem of having inconsistent direction.
Okay, with the motion maker, that I go ahead and add in the definition of on-premise? Because I think that was really, all of the, all of the discussion we've had comes back to how we're defining on-premise, and what the peripheral uses of that premise may be that then allow all these contractual loopholes. We're not going to close them all, I understand that, but right now, it reads, "Any sign identifying or advertising the businessperson's activity, goods, products, or services which are located on the premise where the sign is installed or maintained." And I think that's where we've really opened the door to all of the side contracts and things that go on. Joel, a question that, would this simplify the, to the point that it does, at least in my mind, to simply say that an on-premise sign is any sign identifying or advertising the principal or primary tenant of that building?
Well, I don't know if you want to go down that road, because how does that then affect Walgreens saying, you know, milk or a certain product, when they're trying to... I mean, you're talking legitimate on-premise advertisement, where it's, it's six packs of Coke, $2.99, and they are legitimately coming into Walgreens and buy Coke, versus the Coke symbol, and not really specifically tying it back, but technically Coke is sold on-premise. And, I mean, I'm throwing this out there, and let's be honest with each other, that the Civic Center sign is doing that right now, and this is part of where this has come from. So, it isn't just the off-premise advertising companies and these on-premise signs that we're worried about that are doing this, but I think you need to leave it, goods, services... I mean, again, that is a pretty universal definition of on-premise signage. We didn't just create that out of nothing, that came from other codes. I do think it would be worthwhile, though, to say that you cannot sell advertising on an on-premise sign. So that it is hopefully tied back to you actually putting up the goods, products, or services you're actually trying to sell on your on-premise business, and not trying to take advantage of the fact you're selling somebody's product on your business, to then allow another, somebody to come in and purchase advertising space from you.
Good, thank you.
Did you want to offer a minute?
Obviously, we want to have the not-selling clause in there. Do we want to fit that in at this point, Joel? Is that, would you be the most comfortable to add it in now?
Well...
And if that's the case, I'll add a second friendly amendment to say that we would not allow the sale of advertising on on-premise signage.
I do see this separate, I'd like to address the animation and the size issues together, and then the on/off-premise issue separately. My view on it is that generally, our calculations for determining the size of an on-premise sign work. We didn't have problems until the video came in, or the digital. That's why I kind of went down the road, I did, where, I'm not limiting, I'm not trying to limit the size, or change the calculation of size for on-premise signs generally, but putting an outside size, maximum size, on a video digital reader board, because that's where it seems like the problems with how the size was calculated came in. And I think if you, then ultimately, looking at all together, you allow animation on digital, but you limit the size of the digital, and then you say, "No selling the off-premise", that you solve the issue that I think the majority of the people that I've talked to have the heartburn with, versus trying to get in and limit on-premise signs generally, or do that, go that route. But I also think you could still potentially have problems if you don't limit the size of the digital, the video, and somebody could put up a, you know, 300 square foot, or 500 square foot, because they have a lot of frontage, digital sign, that's going to look a lot like a billboard. And if you have a sign that size, you're not just going to be playing text messages, or showing the simple graphic that was shown on the Highmark sign, you're going to have pictures and want to show videos, and you're really going to want to run that thing to the extent of its capabilities.
And I guess that was Joel, quite bluntly, I thought the 250 square foot came into play on them as well. You're saying that it does not?
No. It's not an on-premise size.
It's working off of curb calculation only, so we need to throw a max on there to limit as well, so.
But you know, the signage, you have a certain amount of signage that's allowed for an on-premise. I would not recommend that you play around overall with the square footage, because again, until this video came in, this was not an issue really on the, on the square footage. It wasn't something that, in the eight years I've been here, that's ever been a problem until that came up, so.
So, let me clarify what we've been discussing, and make sure that the motion maker is clear with it, so that I'm clear with what all the amendments have been, that we are saying that motion animation would be allowed on on-premise signage at 60 square feet or below, no motion would be allowed above 60 square feet, and that no video signage would be allowed in excess of 250 square feet, and that no advertising would be sold on any on-premise. Is that what your suggestions have been?
No, my suggestions have been, allow animation, and as far as, I'll have to figure out how to define it, allow this, maximum size of a on-premise reader board, digital reader board, 60 square feet, and no allowing, not allowing the sale of advertisement on an on-premise sign. You can't sell advertisement on an on-premise sign.
So, for clarification's sake, the original amendment we had spoken to of anything above 60 square feet of not having motion would be irrelevant, because you're saying that 60 square feet would be the maximum on-premise digital sign allowed?
Correct, unless someone got a variance. Although you could, there is a way around that, too. If you put, if you made signs, digital signs over 60 square feet prohibited, you cannot grant a... grant a variance to a prohibited sign. So then they couldn't, they couldn't vary those to be larger than sixty square feet.
Can I ask Eric a, a question, please? Eric, do you mind? Sixty square feet, legitimate size for an on-premise sign, are you going to, do you, it looks, from what I've seen around town, most of them are smaller than that. Are we, are we eliminating or, or limiting any businesses by saying sixty square feet? Obviously, I'm thinking of something along the interstate, the possibility there, but we're limiting you the ability to sell something bigger than sixty, obviously.
Well, the truth of the matter is, I think the majority of any of them that you see around town are, are less than sixty square feet. Not a big deal. But the allowability of a variance on something that's prohibited, that scares me, because there are instances, if you look out on the interstate, where they may require a larger sign. I, I, I mean, I hate to bring in Flying J and, and Fairfield out there, but those are considerably larger than a hundred square feet. I don't think 250 is the number here. But I also have to say, I think the, the old Radisson sign is a, a exception of the rule, too, a- as far as that size goes. I think even by, as long as you're addressing that they are not flashing, and that the brightness is being considered and measured through code enforcement, then that advertisement, even on the old Radisson sign, I don't think is going to be an issue if they can only have a static message for eight seconds, or whatever it is, and then flip it to another one. I don't think it's the actual image up there that's the problem. It's when they flash, pulsate, and if they're too bright. So I don't think there's as big an issue as maybe Joel is thinking there on something allowed that size. I don't see any issue whatsoever with a hundred feet, and I don't know how you would word it, but I would be careful about the prohibition of anything over sixty square feet, anyway, because I think there definitely has to be an area out there where a variance can be attained if it is deserved, anyway.
Just for our reference point, the one that we're looking at tonight quite a bit, the Highmark sign, how many square feet is that?
About fifty, fifty-two square feet.
Jim White's sign?
Hmm, thirty-five in that neighborhood, give or take five square feet.
Okay. So sixty's legitimate?
Night of Blood Service, probably ten square feet. Rapid carries one on there, probably ten square feet. There's a lot of smaller ones. The, the most recent public purpose sign put at, at General Beetle was roughly thirty-two or thirty-five square feet. I mean, the majority of them are in that neighborhood.
To, to move this thing on, because I think we can, thank you very much, Eric. I'm going to go back to the friendly amendment, Steve, that we would have on-premise at sixty square feet and motion allowed up to that point, and that above sixty, we would not allow above sixty square feet. The prohibition language is too strong, Joel. So however you have to phrase that, because Eric brings up a, an excellent point, that we need to have the, the ability to have a variance for those unique situations. And besides that, future councils can't get off that easy. And, and then the, the, the point in there as well, that you cannot sell advertising on an on-premise sign. Then I'll leave it at that and get off my friendly amendment, Steve.
Joel, go ahead, and then we'll ask Steve if that's okay as a friendly amendment.
Okay. I was, just to clarify, if you're talking video over, are you talking that generally it would be, the maximum size for a video would be sixty square feet, but you could get a variance, we wouldn't prohibit it? Or are you saying that you could have animation at sixty square feet, you could build one that's a hundred square feet, but it'd have to be static, or something like that?
No. Sixty was the maximum, and a variance is allowed above.
Okay.
You have to have a basis for a variance.
Yes. You would need a vari- you would need, you would need something like, "I am on the interstate, the, the speed is seventy, so at this distance, it needs to be this big to be seen."
So if we're going to adopt this, then we also have to include the basis for that variance?
No. The vari- here's the problem. You, you need a variance, you need a basis for every variance. Depending on your point of view, the justification for the variance may be sufficient, or it may not be sufficient. And some variances, there are times the variance board, any variance board, is more stringent than others. There are times, depending on who the membership is and whatnot, it changes. You know, not everybody's going to agree that, that meets all the criteria every time, but generally, there has to be a basis for any variance. They don't, they're not allowed to just grant a variance to grant a variance.
All right. I, before we go any further, I need to ask, Steve, are you okay with that friendly amendment?
I think I know what we're talking about, but we're back to the original, am I right, Dave? We're talking about the sixty square feet, we're going to allow the animation on sixty and under, and above. They can still have one larger than sixty, but they can't do the animation. That's your understanding?
Actually, you can't go above sixty unless you have a, a variance with a basis.
Correct. And, and I think, and, and I wanted to ask Joel a question on this, because we're making this part of it, but it seems to me, we've talked about, I don't know how much language you have, Joel, but maybe you can speak to this, but you've talked about the speed of the street that, where the sign is located, and the intended target audience for that street. Do we have any really concrete language from other ordinances that we can borrow that from?
I've been giving that some thought. No, I don't have any language. I think if we tried to, at this point, figure out a speed-based size, that that's a little more than is something that we're going to get resolved right away. That may be something that, after we get through this, we could look at into the future. But right now, I think the, the si- the size based on speed is going to be a little beyond what we're able to do right now, or it would significantly delay the adoption of these ordinances.
Do you accept the friendly amendment?
I do, but I, I just want to be clear that we're not including the vehicle, if you will, for the variance. We don't have a vehicle for that. And I don't, I'm not, if that's part of the amendment that you were wanting, Dave, I don't know. Okay.
No, because we can't.
All right. That's what I wanted to make very clear. So, okay, thank you.
We're, we're not shutting the door on a variance. We're just not including the mechanism to have a variance.
Okay. Before we go any further, Charlene, do you understand the motion? Why don't you repeat it for us, so we're all on the same page?
Okay. What I believe the motion is, is we have a friendly amendment to allow motion on on-premise signs that are sixty feet, sixty square feet in size or less, that on-premise signs that exceed the sixty square feet would require a variance for motion, and there is no selling of advertising from an off, from an on-premise sign.
No. I think the size, in order to be bigger than sixty feet, it would need to have a, a variance with a basis. Not, not greater than sixty feet with, for, for motion.
Yeah, sixty square feet requires a variance.
Period. No, no motion on that.
And it's animation and/or motion for sixty square feet.
Okay.
And there's no selling.
We'll go to, we'll go to Gary Brown, then Jordan, then Ron. So let's go first.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. And, and no sale of advertising on, no advertising, no sale of advertising on the on-premise sign. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I received a phone call from a business owner in town that owns several of the same type of business in town. His question to me, and asked me to bring it up to this astute buddy, that, why can't he, he isn't selling, but why can't he advertise his other businesses in the little location and what they're doing? Joel started to kind of touch on it with the Walgreens thing and that. But if he owns the same number of hardware stores, same number of beauty shops, like that, all in town, he wants to know why can't he advertise his different businesses, what they're doing, on his on-premise sign? Or can he?
Let's go to Joel.
Thank you.
He cannot. I mean, the definition of an on-premise sign is that it's advertising, it is meant to advertise for the premises where the sign is located. As soon as you start allowing advertisement off the premises where the sign is located, you've really opened Pandora's Box, because it'll be difficult to control. We, that requires code enforcement to know what businesses they own, and then other people see it, and they start doing it, and they don't realize the circumstances. You know, somebody came to the Sign Code Task Force and says, "Hey, you know, we live in a capitalist society, I want to sell, I want to buy a video billboard and sell advertising on it. Why should the off-premise sign companies have all the fun? And why should they make all the money? I could have a nice source of income if I was allowed to sell advertising." You know, that didn't get very far. I think it's important to maintain the separation between the on and off-premise signs, and when you start allowing things like that, it's going to break down the distinctions. And we're already seeing some of that right now, and it's been a focus of a lot of our discussion tonight, because the authority is starting to break down the distinction between on and off-premise. And, and again, to be completely honest, the city of Rapid City started some of that with the Civic Center sign, so...
So even though he's not selling advertising, he won't be able to do it? I won't tell him it's because it'd be an inconvenience to the city, but I'll, I'll tell him that the answer is no. He's probably watching.
Well, and that's not something you've done. That was the answer before any of this discussion ever came up.
Anything else, Gary? Okay, we'll go to Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and I hate to kind of look at the same track, but I am curious if it's been addressed. With dealing with the no sale of advertisement, or, you know, no advertisement on, on-premise signs, or the sale of advertisement, if we have events that are sponsored in cooperation of other companies, and those are advertised for the purpose of the event, including both the Civic Center, public, and private institutions, are we going to consider that a sale of advertisement? And that, I, I hate to open up and muddy the waters, but I, I'm just, I'm seeing a loophole here. Because, prime example, I'm also looking at, you know, the Fairfield Inn was brought up, and they've also sponsored, you know, soccer events. Well, those are two different organizations, and you're advertising two different organizations at one location, but it's for an event. So I, I mean, are we considering that sale of advertisement, or, because Coca-Cola, Budweiser, many of these companies sponsor many different events, and they could use that as a way to, so I'm just curious. I mean, if we could...
Who'd like to take a crack at that one?
You know, I don't know that I completely understand what Alderman Mason's concern is. I mean, if it's not on the premises, you shouldn't be, I mean, the simple answer is if it, the event isn't occurring on the premises, they should not be advertising it on their sign.
Let me ask this.
Even if it is a charitable, or...
I think I'm understanding where you're going. Let's say you have a business that has rinse-out booths for a flea market.
Right.
Okay? And if you're willing to pay an extra $10 a day, you can have advertising on the, the business-owned sign out front. Is that, is that kind of where you're going?
Not specifically.
For your booth at the flea market.
But that would be an example of, I mean, a greater, a better example is, if I'm a business, I should have the right to express what my business does in the community. I mean, that's, you know, kind of freedom of speech issue, that I guess I'm kind of delving into here. As a business, I have the right to say, I'm, you know, I'm cooperating in this event. For example, let's say, let's take, maybe I'm, I'm supporting the wavy, you know, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event that's coming up this Saturday. Maybe I want to, you know, advertise that, but also I get Coca-Cola to make a huge donation. So now it's two different companies, but I'm talking about my company's support of an event. Are we going to limit that and say that that's a sale of advertisement, because Coca-Cola is now sponsoring the same event that I'm a part of? For example, the Civic Center's done it a couple of different times where you see Coca-Cola, da-da-da-da-da, and little logos that include the sponsorship of that event. I mean, do you get what I'm saying?
No.
But then you haven't sold it.
Okay.
I mean, that, that is part of the sponsorship. I, I don't see it limiting sponsorships. What I see it limiting is me coming over and saying, as a representative of Coca-Cola, "Hey, to the grocery store, you sell our product, why don't you put this advertisement on in, in your selling space to them?" I mean, ultimately, I think that's going to be difficult to enforce, but if you have the wording in there, if we become aware of a blatant situation, then we can at least have a tool to do something about it. Ultimately, how code enforcement is going to work ninety percent of the time, is they're going to go out and look at the sign and ask themselves, "Is this a good product or service or event taking place on the premises where the sign's located?" It would, I would just, the suggestion for that language came from outside, brought it up. I don't think, I think there's some merit to it, because there are some blatant situations right now where this is occurring, and, and it's kind of blurring the line between what's an on and off-premise sign, and I think that's an important distinction to maintain, and, and adding that language probably won't have an effect, again, ninety-nine percent of the time, but if there is a blatant situation, then we could have at least a tool to act on it.
Yeah. I, I mean, I appreciate that, Joel, and I guess my concern is, is that there's numerous different instances where you have two different entities that are cooperating together, and, you know, they discuss it using their medium. My concern is, is that if we don't delineate, you know, the arguments of, you know, making arbitrary decisions, then comes back to this body for not being able to distinguish the two. And I guess that's, that's kind of my concern. Anyway, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Jordan. We'll go to Ron Sasso, and then we'll go to Charity.
Just a question for clarification on the electronic billboards. If it's a, for instance, a business with a, that's on a corner, and they've got a lot of frontage, would they be entitled to have more than one electronic? Like, one on each side, you know?
Potentially. I, I'm not overly familiar at this point, couldn't answer specifically, but if they were allowed to have a, a sign on each frontage, I don't think that anything we have right now would prevent it from, so long as their total signage was within the allotted amount of square foot, signage, square footage, they would be allowed to have more than one. Yes.
Thank you.
Charity? Okay. Anything else in the motion? Bonnie Peterson?
Hi, I just wanted to make a clarification that this does not allow full motion images, graphics, or video. Are those still prohibited in your motion?
Well, my understanding was motion would be allowed. I don't think anybody's addressed video.
Okay. I just, because earlier someone said video, so I just wanted to make sure that, okay.
That would include video?
No, not by his definitions here, because you have a separate thing here, existing digital.
Well, we could try to, try to separate it, and I mean, I think everybody kind of knows what video is. I mean, a lot of these, I'm trying to think of one where I've seen video on, the smaller ones, and I don't know that I can think of one.
Well, there's some small Budweiser horses moving around town.
Well, but those are on a 250 square foot, I believe.
I don't know, there's one small one over on, on East North Street.
Oh.
But I don't, I don't know what the size is. But anyway, my, my, I just wanted to make sure that you're not allowing video, so I just wanted to see clarification on that.
Any further discussion on the motion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I think we've covered that item, 5808, completely, so now we move on to, Jerry? Charity, you want to loan him your microphone?
My kingdom for a microphone. In here, what is it? On-premise sign is forty-five feet, off-premise sign is forty-five feet, difference in height? Why is that? Why do we have the difference in overall height? Again, goose and gander question.
I cannot answer that.
You cannot? Should we not have people?
The, the size of the signs is the same as it is in the current code, and...
The height.
Or the height, yeah. And then the height, the size, they're the same as, it's just transferred from what the current regulations are. And where those originally came from, I was not working for the city at that time, and I can't answer that.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who can answer that question, as to why there's a difference in height? In the original code? Mr. Farrar, your name has been mentioned up here.
First of all, I want to go back to that last one and say, Ron, don't call them on-premise billboards or digital billboards if we're talking on-premise. Billboards is off-premise, okay? Off. All I can say is on the forty-five... All I can say is on the 45-foot overall height, really goes to places like Applebee's and ShopCo, and some of those businesses, motels and whatnot on the interstate. That's really, as far as I know, and Jim's been working almost 40 years at Rosenbaum Sign, so he probably knows best if there's further clarification, but I think that's the main reasoning. And I don't think you're going to see 45-foot tall signs in or near downtown Rapid City, unless there's a really weird circumstance. Hope that helps.
Jerry?
It just gives me examples, doesn't justify the difference. Should it be there?
Well, if they're short, you can't see them.
Well, what about the on-premise? They could be short, and you can't see them, too. Well, that's why, why do we have 130 and 145? Let's make some sense.
Jerry, I don't think we have an answer for you on that tonight.
Can we get an answer? I'm just, inconsistencies.
I, I could only think it's because the size of billboards are generally, for the most part, quite a bit larger, and so they do their job at 30 feet. Now, I understand there's a, there's an idea that they'd like to have 30 foot from grade, and I think that's great. I think that's a great idea, because there's overpasses and whatnot, whether you're out on West Chicago or Highway 79, that are probably the factors where they want that. I don't think they want them sticking way up in the air for any other reason. And the guys from Lamar or, I haven't heard anything from Brennan at Epic, if he can answer the question.
I'm just curious why we have such wonderful consistency. I'm asking Brendan now.
Hi, Brendan Casey, Epic Outdoor. Nationwide, there's, billboards operate in a separate plane as on-premise, so that people can kind of tell at a glance what is an on-premise versus an off. It's just more of an industry standard than anything. Also, it gets our signs up out of the way, so we're not blocking visibility of the landowner's business.
Yeah, blocking his on-premise sign. Thank, okay.
They're not.
Good, thank you. I'm just tickled.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 5808. This is a, I'm sorry, 5809, an ordinance regulating off-premise signage by adding Chapter 15.30 to the municipal code. Joel, we'll go to you.
Uh, first is really just to clean up. Frankly, there's not a lot to do on the off-premise signage, because the initiated ordinances dealt with most of the hot button issues, and I haven't gathered there's any sense to change what was initiated by the voters, so that really doesn't leave a lot. One of the things I noticed when I was preparing this is that 1528-240, it just talks about alteration of existing signs, but then when you read it, it really pertains to off-premise signs only. So I would ask to, I'm just going to probably move that from 1528 into this chapter, because it deals with the off-premise signs. That was really the only issue that I had identified. I'm just, let's, let's direct it, otherwise I'm just going to do it, so.
Okay. Do we have, do we have a mo, do we have a motion? We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Laurenti to direct the, that 1528-240, we move to this chapter? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next order of business?
Alderman Peterson brought up an issue about minimum area sign face coverage. Some of the signs where there's no advertising, it's just for lease, there's a small for lease. There are some codes, I think even the state codes dealing with billboards have a minimum coverage area. Just a question, if you want to have a minimum coverage area? You know, the idea is, you have a for lease, and you say, you need to cover this much, they are going to probably just put up a big for lease, like, say you needed 100% coverage, you're just going to have for lease covering the whole sign. But really, just a question for you guys to discuss now, it was something that was brought up.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
I believe when I was reading in the codes, it talks about how the billboard, stack billboards are supposed to have full face coverage. And yet, when you drive around, there's like a little postage stamp size, like, you know, kind of like rent me type deal. And it looks pretty tacky to have this little bit when the sign is, I mean, it looks like a postage stamp really on a sign. And again, I'm seeking clarification, because it looks to me like part of the rules is that they're supposed to have their whole thing covered up, whether that's if they want it for their rent sign, or to give to charity, or whatever, that they should have a full face. Because why take, because anyway, it, to me, it makes the city look kind of ran down. Not to mention that it kind of is contradictory information to what's already in the sign code, so, I might read on that.
Anybody have any comments on that? Steve?
I don't know, and Bonnie, maybe you can correct me. I'll, I'll leave that open to you, but, and I, just from what you're saying, what I'm taking from that is that, my impression is that you're saying they should cover that entire sign with for rent or for lease?
Our, our donate it to charity, because it says, it says in the code that it's supposed to be full-faced, and it's not full-faced. It's like a little postage stamp basically saying, we're so pitiful that our, you know, we have to have a little for rent sign on our billboard.
And maybe we need some differentiation in language, but I think there's a difference between a sign company having a client who is advertising an ad of some sort, and the advertising company looking for clients. And I, I don't want to put some stipulation, just for splash, I don't want to put some stipulation on the sign companies on how they should sell or rent or lease their signs if they think a one-by-three advertisement is going to cover it, because that's cost. So if we're going to require that they put for lease on the entire face, that's a cost that I don't think we should be burdening the business with. I think, and I think there's a clear distinction between having a real advertisement and a client that you're advertising with, and the fact that you're trying to find a client. And I think we need to be very careful about adding some undue cost to those sign companies in that situation, but...
You know, just, just a food for thought as we continue this debate, I've been in other places, other states, that I think have rules like this. And you know how, you know how you comply with that? You take your panels and you scramble them. So you drive by and you see, you know, you see the word state first, and you see real estate, and then you see the name, because they've scrambled the panels in order to comply with that. And I think, I think if you, I think that a rule like this could really have some unintended consequences if we're not, if we're not careful. So with that being said, you still have the floor. Do you have anything else?
And maybe I, you know, if there's somebody from the sign companies that could give me, give us some guidance, I think I'd like to hear that as well, what they think of that. And if somebody there has an answer, I'm sure, that's my understanding, one of them at least has all the answers, but...
Hi, Brendan Casey again. Is the issue the size of our for lease sign? I'm sorry, I didn't catch everything. Counsel, I...
Yeah, Brendan, I think that was the case, was that there's a, part of the ordinance says that the sign, the entire face, has to be used, am I correct? And so that would, apparently, they want to make sure that that includes the fact that you don't have a client yet, and when you're putting up a for lease or for rent.
I don't even know how to react to that. I find it hard to believe that's the biggest problem we got with signage around here, but certainly, we try to abide by the code. Certainly, we're generally run full, so I don't see this as a big issue, one way or another. I guess you can do whatever you want with it.
Do you see, if, if the ordinance says, when you put a for lease or for rent, it's not, you don't have a client yet, and you've got to put a for sale or, or not for sale, but for rent or for lease, is there some significant cost of covering the entire sign now with that for lease?
Well, certainly there would be, and I think it's fairly obvious, that would just be a punitive measure for sign companies. And that's, and this is what we're tiring of, is this type of punitive ordinance. It's nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charity Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to raise eyebrows as well as the alarm anytime we're talking about telling a company that they have to donate space, product, service to charity. If, if it's government mandated, it no longer is charity. I'm wondering, though, could we do something that, if a billboard has been blank for a significant period of time, I don't know what that time would be, is the market telling the company that that location is no longer desired, and it, I mean, is that something that the billboard companies could assess? And, you know, that, that it's just no longer viable, it's time for it to come down? What say you, Mr. Casey?
Well, thank you.
Thinking out loud here, so don't be too mean to me.
Oh, no, no. I, I understand your concerns, but this is something we assess weekly, monthly. Under the present code, we can't move them if we wanted to. We're certainly not going to tear them down if there's any traffic change 10 years from now. The signed credit scenario, as written, theoretically is supposed to give us incentives to bank these credits and then move the signs eventually somewhere. We fell for a bait and switch, quite frankly. You have devalued the signed credits down to nothing. We have no incentive to move or downsize anything. There is zero incentive for us to do that. As far as filling up vacant board, vacant boards, we do that all the time with nonprofit. There is industry, you've seen the ones with Mother Teresa on them, and certainly Al could name off 10 more. And those vinyls are donated, and we do hang those free of charge. But obviously, if we have a paying renter, we want them on there. But that's the problem systemically with this code.
I, I do understand how the initiated measures took away your incentive to take down the billboards that most people want to see taken down, quite honestly. And that's one of those unintended consequences, as you've so blatantly pointed out. My question for you is, is there an average length of time that some of the, especially some of the ones on the perimeter of the cities are, are blank? Do you, do you know what that day, week, month is?
Well, with us, it's, it's not very much. We usually get, we have two types of, of clients, those who want directional, meaning next off-ramp is a day's in. And then we've got ones that just want general traffic count. So we have a very good mix. We generally run full. Again, there's few exceptions. Oddly enough, some of our ones that are hardest to rent are the biggest ones we have. These are ones that were purchased from another company. They're so big, people don't even want to rent them. We can't downsize them.
And now you have no incentive to take them down.
So they'll stay. That is the ultimate, and I, and I think the public needs to know that. You know, scenic Americas, or scenic Rapid City's efforts here were designed to demolish billboard companies by inhibiting us from actually doing business as you would in any other community. What we've got now is something that doesn't work for the industry, doesn't work for Lisa Modrick's group, doesn't work for our clients, doesn't work for anybody. And how do you fix this code? I don't have any idea. I really don't.
I really don't either. Thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
And I will say, just for the record, I've had half a dozen people ask me after the initiated measures last summer, when the static billboards were coming down. Somehow, the message was lost. I yield.
Bonnie Peterson?
Okay.
Would you not have a motion on the floor?
Sorry, I, it took me a while to find what I was referring to. 15.28.150, it says, "Advertising message required. All signs shall display an advertising message. If any sign fails to display a full-face advertising message for 30 consecutive days, the building official shall notify the owner of the sign that the sign is in violation of this section. And that if the violation is not corrected within 60 days, the sign will be subject to immediate removal." And that's where I was concerned about why it wasn't full-faced. And also, I'm also concerned that this violation is not corrected within 60 days, that's an awfully long time for a business that would already know they're not, they're already in violation, that they have 60 full days to fix it. I don't think any of us get 60 days to fix our speeding when we're getting a speeding ticket. So anyway, that's my concern, and that's why I brought it up, because it seems to me that it's in violation, and plus also that I don't think, should have 60 days to correct a violation.
Joel?
I mean, ultimately, it's up to the council to what you want to allow. I was looking at state law prior to the meeting, and to give you an example, state law gives companies a year, and the year is from the date, is measured from the date the violation is sent on the billboards. So, you know, what's reasonable, that's really up for you, speaking for the community, to decide. Right now, I can't say that, unless there's a complaint, they're probably going out and looking at and measuring for the for lease, the 60 days. I think your reading of it is certainly correct, that it says it's full-face advertisement. Alderman Laurenti was asking a question, well, does the full-face apply to an advertising message? Well, if the for lease isn't an advertising message, then they have a problem in that all billboards have to have an advertising message. So, yes, it's an advertising message. It probably should be full-face, but it isn't something that I would say has probably been high on our enforcement priority list, if given direction, otherwise it could be. But, you know, how they respond to that, I don't know how the billboard companies will respond to that. Imagine they'll put something up there, anything, just to come into compliance. It's not, they're certainly not going to let the billboards be taken down or come down. And if a billboard is taken down under that, I think you can expect we'd probably be in a lawsuit over it.
We, you know, I think we've had an, you have anything else on this, Bonnie? I would really like to have a motion. I think we've had a fair amount of discussion on this topic, and we should have a motion to acknowledge or to, or to take some sort of an action. Charity? Go ahead.
It looks like it's already covered.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, to me, the wording of the discussion point was to introduce, or was it more for enforcement?
Well, I was trying to seek some clarification, because I was told that the little postage stamp, you know, that it was adequate, and yet the sign, you know, it says it's a full advertising message, so I'm just, especially some places over St. Pat, there's a bunch of signs over there that are, it just adds to an area that just makes it look ran down. That's...
Well, I guess the question I would have is, is if, what I'm hearing is that for lease would be an acceptable advertisement, because it's advertising their business, would you rather have the small, the small sign posting, or would you have, rather have big, huge, gaudy letters filling the whole up thing, you know, the whole thing up saying for lease? I mean, I don't know if that would have unintended consequences as well, as far as the aesthetics go. Would it look more rundown, would it not? Would it just be obnoxious, would it not? I, I'm...
Well, perhaps we can address this issue through code enforcement in the, in the future.
Well, I, I'd like to, I'd like to speak up if, on this, is if, if code enforcement is asked to, and we need to clarify this, if, because if, if the expectation is to enforce, use code enforcement on a billboard when it says for rent or for sale, instead of filling up the whole white space, I don't think that that's a supportable code enforcement action, especially when we have so many other code enforcement actions that are pending, to the point that we've had to hire another attorney to help us with code enforcement. So I think we need, I think we need to have a motion, if we're going to do that, there needs to be a motion from the council to give us that type of direction to, to proceed. So...
I'll make it.
All right. We're going to go to Dave Davis for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we direct the city attorney's office to bring back language for 15-28-150 that would match the state law, since the language that we have right now is somewhat ambiguous.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Everyone understands the motion, there will be...
I maintain it.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
Basically, I thank Alderman Peterson for bringing it to our attention. I think what we've, we've really identified here is that the ordinance, the way that we have it, is probably unfair to the billboard companies. The, the purpose of it is very, very simple. The purpose is not to have a bunch of ugly billboards vacant around town, okay? The purpose is to have them full. And there needs to be something to encourage them to go out and find, whether it be a PSA or a tenant, all right? I mean, that's the intent of the state law and of our ordinance. But by the same token, looking at it as a business person, if I constructed an office complex, there's no city ordinance...
complex, there's no city ordinance that says I have to have it full. And that if I don't find tenants for it, or they're vacant for 30 days, that I have to tear down my investment. That's what this says, and I struggle with that. That's what we're telling these guys, is that if they've made an investment, and if they can't find a tenant because the roadway has changed, and I'll, I'll just use any one of the streets that's under construction in Rapid City right now, I'm sure there are going to be more that have for lease on this face of those billboards. Sitting there for 30 days or 60 days, they're going to be available for rent. I struggle there. I, I think that that's unfair to the, to them as business people, and I think we have to look at the entire scope of it. The point that Sam brought up earlier, I too have seen those, where it's been a hot Scotch or whatever of pieces, and it, it looks like the Dickens, but it fills the face. It satisfies the rule. It is fully faced. And I think it's probably less done under the technology that they use on billboards today than when they used to go up and just paste a bunch of, what were those called? What'd you, sheets? Is that what you called them, Jim? You know, of whatever was left over that the guys hadn't torn in the wind, and all of a sudden, you had them full. But today, I think when they stretch out a vinyl, with probably much less of that done. But let's address what we're trying to do here. We're trying to keep them at least as attractive as we can, and maybe a five-foot square for lease is more attractive than a 100-foot square for lease, or a mismatch of all these pieces. So that would be my, the reason for that motion was to, that we match it up with what the state law says, and that we aren't going out and looking for another lawsuit, that we have the state at least to back us up. I yield.
We'll go to Richie, and then we'll go to Charity.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I need to ask Lisa Modrick, if I may, the question. She does a lot of traveling around through the country, and if she has some other suggestions, because right now, we've only heard from one side, one point of view. I'd like to hear another point of view on this. If Lisa can, is she still in the audience? If Lisa could give us another perspective on how other communities do the fulfilling of vacant billboards.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council again. It's hard to find a city that has as many billboards as we do, first of all. It truly is. But it's, I have researched and researched to try to find one that has this many billboards in its city limits. So there's some empty ones, and I think we're talking about the Highway 79. I believe if you go back in some other sign minutes that go back probably a decade, that's been the same corridor of signage that hasn't had advertising on it. So it's talked about a lot, and I don't see other cities that have lineup, a lineup, a lineup, a billboard just waiting for something to happen on a road, so that they can, you know, explode and have great advertising again. In the, in other communities, you just don't see that. I see public service announcements on there, and I know that they're, they have to put up a certain amount, because they're in the advertising business. So there is a, there is a quality there that can be done. But there could be some other wonderful things. I mean, if, if they wanted to really be good stewards, put up Welcome to Rapid City, put daisies, put, you know, put some wonderful things on there. But right now, we've got a lot of gray matter, and that gray matter does look rundown, and that's what we look like. And when we talk about tourism, do we want to see a lot of gray matter, or do we want to see something good? And in the code, I've read that code, and Bonnie's quote is exactly as written long before I ever knew anything about sign codes. This goes back probably another decade. It's been in there trying to solve a problem. And I believe it also states that that postage stamp needs to be 25 percent. I think, I think there's a percentage that it's supposed to be filling that, in order to actually be created as an advertisement statement, that the billboard is, is for lease or for rent. Right now, most of them are covering maybe a sixth, not even the 25 percent. So there's, there's code enforcement issues all over the place. Maybe good stewardship could happen, maybe bring him to the table and say, let's do something really good to welcome our citizens with signage that doesn't have advertising on it, instead of just gray matter that runs our corridors. And I think they would do it. I think the billboard companies want to be good stewards at this table, if you want them to be. Maybe nobody's asked.
Richie, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. One of the points that was made up here, just under consideration, is, is that correct about the 25 percent application, instead of the?
I believe it could be. I was looking at the state law, and I was thinking the state law is 25 percent, so...
Is that, is that problematic for code enforcement to have that brought into compliance?
Well, is it, is it problematic for code enforcement to enforce that? No. What I stated is that it's not been a priority at this point, to go out and measure it, and you have three code enforcement officers, and then the time, and, no, it hasn't been a priority. If the council wants that, or the mayor wants that to be a priority, it could be, but...
Thank you, Joel. I'll go to the floor.
Charity?
Thank you. 31.29.63.3 says available for lease or other similar message is not considered advertising material. Any public service message is considered advertising material if it is bona fide public service announcement, which encompasses not less than 25 percent of the sign face, and is the same color as the painted background of the sign face. However, the public service message may include name and telephone number of the owner. We'll have a couple of questions. Joel, you, you mentioned enforcement at the state level was what? Could you reiterate that?
I think it's a year, and I think there may be some case law that deals with that.
To take it down?
Well, no, to deal with the for lease not being an advertising message. But I, I don't know, perhaps statutorily, you could say that it isn't an advertising message, but I don't, and the case law might address if it's not specifically addressed and said it's not an advertising message. You know, to be quite honest, sitting here right now, the issues I prepared for, one of them really was not the, the sign face issues and what our current regulations are. So as far as specific questions about what it says, what the state law says, I did look at, and cursor, just a very cursory review of the state law, but I'm not overly prepared to answer a bunch of questions on what our current regulations on sign face requirements are right now.
Okay, well, something to...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Something to consider. I don't, I, I agree with, with Ms. Modrick, that, you know, we don't, we don't want the blank. We want something to look vibrant and active, not, you know, decaying and dying a slow death. Would it be better, and I'm going to talk before maybe someone will make the motion, substitute motion, but could we just insert? If any sign fails to display a full-face advertising message for 30 consecutive days, because that, to me, if there's no advertising on it, they're going to have the for lease. If we leave it as it is, the for lease has worked in there. It's not considered advertising, so they'd still have that 30-day window. Building official will, will go after them, and so they're going to have a total of 90 days to get something up on that face. I think that's more than reasonable. I think if we go to the level of the state, then there, there's, there's no incentive. I'm, I'm thinking there's no incentive at all to, to rectify it. We'll have the blank faces forevermore.
I guess just looking at the, the two state law pieces that are similar, 31.29.63.2, which deals with abandoned signs, and the available for lease, which is the subsequent chapter. I guess just looking at that, that at minimum, we are covering those. If we're making them more stringent, great. But as long as we're not out of line with state, like way out of line with state law, where we're going to be in violation at any point, that's, that's all I would move for.
Gary Brown.
Call and question.
Question's been called. Any objections? Everyone understands Dave Davis's motion?
Please, I want to have a second.
Was it second?
I believe it. I don't believe it. I believe it, but I second it.
Okay. Jerry Wright seconded it. Steve Laurenti seconded it. Charlie, would you repeat the motion?
The motion I have is to direct the city attorney's office to bring back the language from 15.28.240, that, and that it would match state law.
Okay. That's correct? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on the last item, which is removing the signed credit reissue section. Joel?
This issue was actually raised by Lisa Modrick from Scenic Rapid City, and I was not completely clear, so I would actually, sorry with the council, defer to her to explain specifically what she was looking for, for you to do with that.
Mayor, city council, and Joel, the, the sign code, as it's written, and you can see, and I know we hear how many pages there are in that code, some of the thickest part of that is that, that sign credit. And as you read the sign credit and, and how it's written, it has, I see flaws all over it, and I, I think we've talked about that even in Task Force. It's got a lot of challenges in it, challenges before there was an initiative, and challenges today. And I think there's still a body of it in there that states that there would still be signed credits moving around. We just had a, a sign that was taken down and varianced. That was a non-conforming sign that's now going to become a legal sign. And, you know, I, I understand that there might have been even some sign credit negotiations talking. I would hope not, but I, I understand that there was going to be a challenge on that, so maybe it hasn't come before you yet on that. Not certainly by, you know, citizens, but I think on the sign, there's a lot of credits out there. It's a false currency. I think you have to decide where you're going to go with that. But there's pages and pages, and it is, in our view, something that either needs to find an elimination, or it needs to be reviewed down, because it's outdated. It's about three pages of outdated sign code, and that's the sign credit process.
Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. Whether you like signed credits or not at this point, and I think you'd be pretty hard pressed to find anyone, including the sign companies that love the signed credits, we're kind of stuck with them. There's no determination on whether these have a value or not. I tried to do some research on it at one point, wasn't able to come up with anything. Talked to some other people who've looked at the issue, and they confirmed they weren't able to find anything at this point either. And we do have a litigation right now. I mean, essentially, what the initiated ordinances did is prevent the issuance of any, any additional signed credits. So the amount of signed credits we have now is the amount of signed credits we have, until at least some of them are expended. Because what it did is it capped the issuance of any new signed credits when there was more than 20 outstanding. There are way more than 20 outstanding, so for the foreseeable future, no signed credits are going to be issued. As far as what to do with the signed credits that are out there, the ultimate question is, give me, do those have value or not? I suspect that, that at least in part, will be answered in our current lawsuit. If there's a determination they don't have a value, then I think it's going to open up the possibility to have a, a pretty broad-ranging discussion on how we proceed forward after that. If they have a value, then that's going to complicate things.
We had someone in line to speak, so let's go to Dave Davis first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I can second Bonnie's motion, and I'll either take the floor when you're done, or I think we're in the same direction, and that's to table this until after the lawsuit, so that we know where we're headed with it. I truly think that we need to define the value of these signed credits. They are a currency, as Lisa has mentioned. Unfortunately, a previous council has strapped this council and future councils with a currency that, with an undefined value. To scrap it today, we're, we're asking ourselves to be involved in another litigation, because that's a taking. And I'm sorry, I can't, I can't get my arms around it any other way. There have been some plans put out there. Scenic Rapid City's aware of one that, that allowed for the use of some of those signed credits, but it does involve that the conditional use permits would have to allow some additional digital billboards. You know, we, we can't have a complete ban and have a plan to use credits. You can't have both ways. So until the lawsuits are all finalized, and we know where we are, you know, you can't have both sides of the coin. So I think that's really where we need to be on that. But once that's finalized, I think the council at that time needs to really be prepared to, to dig in and look at what it's going to take to give the sign companies, not just the opportunity to spend the credits that they've banked, but if you speak with them, you'll see that Lisa said there's a lot of credits out there. There's not just a lot of credits in the bank, there's a lot of credits that Brendan alluded to. They've got signs that, Highway 79, that Lisa's speaking to, that why should they tear them down? There's no incentive. Because the credits they've got, we're talking about making them valueless. So why take down something that may or may not have value? So we've got to come up with not a way, not only a way for them to spend the credits that they have banked, but also to spend credits that they haven't acquired yet. Signs that they'd like to take down and acquire those credits and use them. And, and that's going to involve some compromise, because it may mean that there's going to be some signs going up that we don't want. And that's, that's going to be the tough issue that is going to be faced down the road. So with that, I will yield, and hopefully, we can vote to get this thing moving on.
Bonnie Peterson for the motion.
I move to table.
Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. A tabling motion is not debatable. All in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn.
Hold on a second.
Hold on a second. We have, we have an ordinance that's been amended, so the, we, actually, we have two options. We can approve first reading or continue it to probably the 29th legal one, or the 31st legal on finance. How much time do you need? What do you think you need?
I think I could get the changes that we've discussed tonight. Trying to think when that, so that'd be by next Wednesday would be the deadline. And since I know the person that prepares the agenda, I could maybe stretch it out an extra day or two, but...
Like 37 hours?
I would say, it's up to you, I guess, whether you want to call it first reading. If you feel comfortable enough that if I bring this language forward, that you're going to be comfortable calling that second reading, or if you want to call it first reading.
First.
Can we have a motion to continue first reading? Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue first, a motion by Davis, second by Peterson, to continue first reading to not this week's legal and finance meeting, but the following legal and finance meeting, which would be Memorial Day week. I'm not sure what date that is. All, the 30th? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn.
Hold on a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.